On to item 28.
Thank you.
Okay, hold discussion about the use of Roberts Rules of Order during council meetings and provide direction to the city manager.
Mr. Gary, I kind of think that items 28, 29, and 30 may kind of sort of roll in together. If we have missed, since we're not voting on these, so there won't be a motion, is it okay if we have her read 29 and 30 and we allow ourselves to have the discussion about all three? Council, are y'all good with that? Because I think we're going to be rolling from one to the other anyway. So, Mr. Gary, would that be all right?
Yes, Mayor, I think that's appropriate. These are not public hearing items or cases, so that's within the council's discretion.
Okay, and I heard enough yeses to say yes. So Ms. Cook, would you go ahead and read item 29 and 30 into the record for us?
Yes, ma'am. Number 29 is hold discussion about current city council rules of decorum and make changes accordingly and provide direction to the city manager. And item 30 is hold discussion about all council members being at the dais during meetings and provide direction to the city manager.
Okay, so I forget who put these on. I think one was Mr. Scott, one was Mr. Prather. There may have been someone else along the way because there's three of them. So what y'all got?
Well, Mayor, I appreciate you putting all these together because they're all very important. And how our meetings have been conducted, you know, I've had some concerns and possibly some ideas on how we can improve them. You know, the thing about the Roberts Rules of Order, it was really to address the time we're spending on agenda items. Now, Roberts Rules of Order is a very formal way to hold a meeting. And, you know, I'm not going to say I'm the parliamentarian up here or eat, but what I was looking on doing to improve the timeliness of our meetings, sometimes you will be on an agenda item. I've seen it where we've been on an agenda item an hour or two hours. And an idea would be that there would be a time limit after a certain amount of time on an agenda item. Let me explain. So if we're on an agenda item, let's say for 30 minutes, at that point, each council member would have either a limited amount of time. Roberts Rules of Order says that would be 10 minutes per council member, or you could have the option of you can speak twice on a motion. The idea would be that, you know, if we limit to 10 minutes per council member, you know, that we're looking at about an hour right there. So we're looking at maximum an hour and a half on agenda items. You know, and I'm not trying to limit debate, but we need to, you know, have our questions put forward. And the message board has been a very useful tool for us to get answers from our staff and for the public to understand what's going on and have those answers as well, and also to put things on the record. Our goal when we come up here on the dais is to come up here, make our case, say our piece, vote yea or nay on an agenda item. But I feel like sometimes we're just, you know, circling back and forth and we're not moving forward and trying to close that agenda item. And I think probably the best way to do that is to enact some type of Roberts Rules of Order when agenda items are taking a significant amount of time.
And may I just say, when I teach parliamentary procedure, that we, I tell folks that Roberts Rules of Order is your safety net. If your own rules, if you don't have a rule, you can use Roberts Rules. We can set our own rules. We don't have to go with 10 minutes. We could say five.
True.
We could say three. So I think what we need to do is we're talking about rules. It may or may not be Roberts Rules.
Exactly.
So we just need to figure that out.
And I would like to hear from my council colleagues, is there an appetite to address the amount of time we're spending on agenda items and the length our meetings are going? We're really an outlier. You know, we start our meetings at three, and we've had several go past midnight. I feel like sometimes we're just, and we're not concluding our debate or making those tough votes. I think this could be a way that when we have something that's a difficult item for us to discuss, in the back of our mind, that we're not going to have an endless discussion. We're going to say our piece, we're going to make our vote, and then we're going to move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, and just correction, our meeting starts at six. The work session is three, and that's different topics. And let me see, I've got a couple of pages of things to say here.
Got it.
So since Mr. Scott, you were one of the ones to put this on the agenda, I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk next if you like, and I'm ready as soon as you're done.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I agree. I think if we put time limits on there to kind of reel things in, it would make things a little more efficient. I do agree that we're here to vote. All our research should be done. If something comes out of the blue that you obviously have a question on, that would be the time to bring it up. And if we get a certain amount of time and we all agree on that, we can also give your time to other people. Just, that's kind of what they do also.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to make it efficient as well and effective.
And I'm going to say that time limits would not work because what we would end up doing is somebody's going to say something, and that takes a minute, five seconds, and then somebody else says something. And if you're still timing the first person, they're going to go, no, their stuff doesn't come out of mine, the staff responding. I'm going to say that we limit the number of times someone speaks maybe to try to limit one person to a certain amount of time total if they want to speak several times. And to keep track of that for seven people is going to be difficult.
And Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up about, you know, you have a certain amount of time that you can bring something out. But I think we should only enact that after, if we've been on an agenda item for 30 minutes, then it kind of triggers a, hey, we're going to enact our time limit rules. Each council member now has two minutes, or two.
Two more minutes.
Yeah.
Well, here's my deal. I know there's other hands up, but I'm going to go first this time. My thoughts on this topic, this is my 14th year on city council, 96 to '02, 2014 to now. I have served with 26 different council members. So I've got some experience, and I'm going to share my observations, thoughts, and recommendations. First, I would like to ask everyone, do we all believe in personal responsibility? Can I get an amen on that? Okay. When someone is elected to the city council, they should know they're taking on a responsibility to be ready for council meetings. That means read the packet, get your thoughts together, be ready to express your thoughts and opinion concisely without personal attacks, come to the meeting prepared, bring your notes. Please do not come in and ramble. That's burning your time, my time, staff time, and everybody else's time. Be ready and be concise. If you're not prepared, that's a problem. When you are prepared, the discussion is focused. So if you want shorter council meetings, please look in the mirror first and think about how you can be a responsible council member. And I've got some more to say, but I will say that in a little bit. So I think the main thing is to be prepared, be ready, bring your notes, and be concise. And I think that would be, go along, and don't repeat stuff over and over again. I think that would go a long way. So that's my two cents worth. I can come back to some other things. I'll go to the hands that are raised, and I'll start with Mr. Baker.
Okay, I'm trying to remember, we have talked about this a little bit in executive session, and I made my thoughts pretty clear. Roberts Rules of Order, and again, that's not what we're assigned, it's not the only thing we have to do, but they are a form of oppression. They are historically used to limit debate so that people with impassioned speeches are cut short, not given the opportunity to speak, or are able to be dismissed for, you know, speaking too, I don't know, angry or something like that, right? Like, Mayor, you straight up were going to use the rules to remove me from council because of not any of, I wasn't saying anything negative, I wasn't calling, I wasn't swearing. It was just a power that you had that seemed appropriate, given the amount of time I had spent on an agenda item and the vociferousness with which I was speaking, right? Like, I was angry, I don't doubt that, but I see Roberts Rules and these sort of mechanizations of government used, as I've said, to just move government forward and not necessarily focus on actually addressing uncomfortable conversations and making space for the reason I'm elected, right? When I hear my colleagues say that our job is to show up and speak a few times and vote on something, leaving out the crucial part of educating my colleagues on perspectives and ideologies and information and research and data that they might not be aware of, that is a failure on your, I'm just going to say, on your part. If you think that your job is simply to just show up and vote, I think that you are not doing a good enough job trying to educate me towards your perspective. And by suggesting that my job is not to educate you at all, we're failing our constituents on a much broader level there if all we're doing is showing up to vote. Additionally.
Mr. Baker, can I stop and correct?
No, I would appreciate it if you would not interrupt me, because this is part of the problem. This is exactly what we're doing.
I want to correct some, I want to correct something you said about me that was not true. You said I wanted to remove you, Mr. Baker, you said I wanted to remove you from council. That is not what happened. Now you can continue.
What happened? No, go ahead, what happened? You interrupted me.
You're misrepresenting Mr. Prather's statements too, but go ahead.
No, you, Mayor, said you would have removed me from the council chambers had I been there at the time.
From the chambers, not from council.
Okay, right, yeah. Way to split hairs and interrupt me and make the meeting longer. This is exactly what I'm talking about. Like, I don't understand why you feel the need to do this. I've talked to you ad nauseam about how nitpicky and unnecessary it is for you. Yes, I have. We've had hour-long conversations about exactly this. So you're asking me to show up, to be ready and concise, and not repeat myself. Let me remind you, one of the most powerful tools in rhetoric is repetition, right? So by asking me to not be repetitive, you're literally taking away one of the most powerful forms of communication, right? And again, not allowing me to stress the importance of the things that my constituents and your constituents that might not be communicating these things to you are concerned about. So, let's see, the last thing is, right, you're telling us to show up and be ready, and Councilmember Prather and Councilmember Scott put this agenda item on there. What about this was ready for discussion tonight? Nothing was provided to us in advance. Yeah, it's a discussion item, but he had two clear ideas of maybe limit time or the number of times people can speak. Nothing was presented to us in advance. Nothing is ready. It didn't give me a chance to weigh the value of what is being presented to us. So we've had a few discussion items that seem to come out of the blue and don't actually provide any context that make all of this a lot longer. So that's, I guess, you know, to just stick to the Roberts Tools and things that have been said, I, those are my opinions, and I think that, you know, again, it's a sign of privilege that we seem to think that limiting debate and making our meetings shorter is what our constituents want. I'm sure some of them do, but I think what my constituents have been proud of is that I've been willing to go on and, as it's been characterized, filibuster in some instances when you have the power through Roberts Tools to call the question at any moment. You can do it right now, right? So this idea of limiting speaking time or limiting the number of times we can speak, why do we need that unless the answer is that my colleagues are afraid to utilize that mechanism for fear of the political optics of using something like that, right? So I don't understand why we need these other rules in place when there is a mechanism that is historically what we've used to deal with items going on too long, or people rambling, or what have you.
Are you done?
Yeah, I muted myself, and my hand's not up anymore, right? So.
Actually, your hand is still up, but now it's down. Okay. Ms. Garza, you're next.
Well, you covered one of my points when we talk about time and just in terms of being respectful to our colleagues, I think it's important that you emphasize being prepared for meetings. And just generally, it is my perception that there's a fundamental lack of equal application of rules, norms, and I guess, yeah, rules and norms, right? Because some of these things, it's like, we're doing this because they've always been done, and others, it's like, you know, the procedure of the meetings. And I have outlined these to Mr. Constantino, I have pointed these out in other correspondence with my colleagues. And so I think sometimes what adds to like the heated debate or the, it kind of triggers within us this need to go on and to keep repeating oneself and to keep honing in their messages that, I guess, at some level, some kind of resentment or anger towards the rules not being applied across the board. For example, sometimes, Mayor, you will, as you're running the meeting, it is my perception that you allow some people to speak out of turn without reprimanding them to the same level that you would others. Again, my perception, things like that. You don't do that very often to me, but, yeah, I get that people get heated, but I think just being intentional in the application of rules to everybody would be helpful so people would stop getting all shook, shaken, and bothered.
And my response to that accusation is clearly I don't believe that it's true. One of the good things that has happened with Zoom is I do ask people to raise their hand. That puts people in order, which is easier to keep up with than what we used to. Sometimes people will blurt something out. I try to keep them from doing that. That's not a good thing. Sometimes if it's short, yes, I might just let it go, but I do think I apply that equally. It's just some people don't do it, so.
Right.
You know, it wouldn't be equal because they don't do it.
Perhaps I should have, I didn't know where this conversation was going to go. I should have taken the time to outline some examples that I've observed, but I can share with you examples of me personally, and this is, when I talk about, there's these almost like microaggressions that occur that they get people feeling some kind of way, like, for example, my camera. You have been on me about my camera since day one, when I have, we have, and I've documented this to Michael because I had asked for clarity on the policies, so had Mr. Scott. In that same, and it'll be like in one meeting, Alyssa, put on your camera, Alyssa, put on your camera. And we go into another meeting, and we've got other people without their camera, and you're not like, you know, you're not on them about it. And it's those little things that make people feel some kind of way. Another example is you're so strict, for example, about the committee rules. I mean, you made the amendment to, so that people vote to, so that folks have, the council members have to vote to get members of the community to participate. And the only committee that that's occurring, like, is in CJR, at the homelessness coalition, the Zoom links public, and the animal services committee. Folks showed up, didn't even know who they are, what they were doing there. And those things have the potential to foster like ill feelings that trickle through the meeting. And those are the only experiences I'm going to speak of because they're mine, but I have observed multiple other things that I perceive to be like an inequitable, unequal application of rules, so.
Yes, we need to do some work on the council rules. Sometimes a meeting gets posted in a manner that wasn't the intent, that just happened to be that way. So yes, you and I talked about that earlier, and I agree, we need to do some changes, although there is in the rule a way to do some things that wanted to do with the CJR committee, and the committee wasn't doing that. So there were some options, and that didn't happen. So yes, I'll agree that we need to do that. The thing about the camera is that when we were under Tomma light, the camera wasn't as critical. And when we weren't under Tomma light anymore, and we were back under the real rules, we needed everyone on camera. Mr. Constantino noted that several times. Mr. Scott was quite a frustration in trying to keep him on camera. And I was trying to keep everyone on camera, Ms. Garza. There were times when you said you didn't feel well and you wanted to participate with your camera off. I did not bug you anymore about the camera. So I'm trying to be equal, but it is really helpful when everyone cooperates.
Right.
Mr. Scott.
I just want to make it clear, during those meetings, there were council committee meetings that weren't even being shown to the public, so.
And that's council committees, which is different.
When I was sick and it was, okay, who's watching us anyways? We can't even have the community here for CJR, so, and I was very sick and bleeding.
I don't think I was bugging you about being on camera during a CJR committee. It's been during council meetings when it's a legal requirement. Yeah, I think your memory may be mixed up on that one. But we're talking about council meetings at the moment. So, I need to hear from, did you have anything else, Ms. Garza?
Yes, I, since we're talking about all these together, I do have comments specifically regarding the other pages here, right? So wait, are we talking about this in chunks, or we're doing this all together right now?
Well, the reason I suggested we do all three of them is because I just figured some of this conversation was going to roll back and forth, and I just want to make it easier for all of us.
Right, well, I just, when it comes to the City of San Marcos mayor and city council house rules, I wanted to know when this was created. I do know that Mr. Lombreras had mentioned that a fundamental flaw is that there's really no mechanism of enforcement. And just generally speaking, similar to Mr. Baker's comments regarding, I guess, basically just respectability politics and like tone policing, I think a lot of these code of conduct are very problematic. They're so subjective. Treat everyone with respect, no personal attacks. So what does that even mean? Like, what is a personal attack? If somebody is going to be, is the public, and they're like, Alyssa Garza, you're so lazy, you need to do better, I wouldn't consider that a personal attack. I would consider that like some constructive feedback. Maybe I should reflect on the work that I'm doing. So, yeah, I just wanted to know like more of the background and the code of conduct. Also, why is every, why is every bullet in a sentence case where like, or where every word is capitalized? That really bothers me. But, yeah, and this was in our binder, but aside from that, we didn't really cover this during our trainings. And I attended both my training and then the training again whenever we elected new folks.
I can answer the question about the one on house rules. This one came from, partially from the consultant that we had when we hired Mr. Lombreras. So this came in, I don't remember the day that, the month and year that Mr. Lombreras started, but this came in shortly after that, I do believe. It would be in a council agenda somewhere along the line that we would have passed it. The other meeting ground rules, you'll notice that that's, that at the bottom it has revised 917 of 2008. And then I also, because I was on council at the time, I remembered we had the extensive one from 1998. And so I just thought, well, let's just put these in here and let people look at them that have been adopted rules in the past. And I don't believe any of them have been rescinded, so I think technically they're still enforced. But I was trying to provide what we had. So apologize for the date not being on that house rules. We need to do that.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And then I just wanted to make one more point. This is something that I wrote down from a blog. Policing people's tone by expecting that their anger be filtered in a polite complaint is a perpetration of injustice, and it's time we start recognizing it as such. I'm not going to do y'all's homework, but I really do hope that you guys take some time to look into the history, the oppressive and problematic nature of respectability politics when it comes to how that influences representation and how that doesn't leave space for those of us who do feel like they are carrying the generational trauma and anger of our community. I mean, just a quick Google search would probably yield some good readings. You can read it while you're having dinner or something, I don't know, but I'm not going to do y'all's homework, but I encourage y'all to do some reading, and maybe you would better understand Mr. Baker's perspectives.
Do you have anything else? Next is Mr. Scott.
A couple of things I keep hearing about not being prepared, but when they're discussion items, I'm not here to prepare for you, I'm here to discuss with you. I want to hear your feedback on something that I'm thinking about. I don't necessarily want to research something that I don't know anything about because I may have a different opinion about it after we've discussed it. So those are the reasons why, there's no reason to bring anything forward like what some other town does or anything like that. I know you, Mr. Baker, do that a lot, which is, I guess, helpful, but a lot of times they get rejected because they don't apply to our community. So that's one of the reasons why, when we say discussion, I just don't, you know, force anything of my opinion on anybody and let everybody's kind of natural, you know, progression come out as we discuss it. I think the time here right now kind of gives us away again, that it's, being late, tonight's been one of the best meetings we've had. We've been very progressive, we've been very quick, you know, very definitely precise and kind to each other. I just, you know, would like that every meeting, you know, just nice to each other and, you know, respectful to each other whether you, you know, agree or not. So that's all I have to say about it.
Next is Mr. Gleason.
All right, thanks, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank my colleagues for, you know, putting this on the agenda. You know, the, look, so first off, as far as my colleagues bringing up timeframes, I don't think I can support limiting debate and things like that. And I know what you guys are trying to get at, and I appreciate that. The big thing is, is as much preparation as I do on my own end, you may bring something to the table that I'm not aware of, even if it didn't get put on the message board. We didn't get a chance to hash that out as a group. And I don't want to limit debate and discussion with my fellow colleagues in any way, shape, or form, because a lot of what we do is compromise, right? You know, you bring something to the table, I bring something to the table, and we try to find middle ground. And that's how, literally how the sausage gets made, right? And so I can't support anything that's going to limit discussion. I think a lot of this gets back to decorum, and I agree with Ms. Garza where she's coming from, that there is this generational divide on how things should be discussed in public forum. But this is a professional environment. Look, we have a citizen who comes in here and speaks, citizen comment period, and brings it up every time. If somebody's chewing gum, if somebody's not sitting upright, you know, I would not function in a court of law that way. I wouldn't go to a meeting in a professional environment and do those kind of things. And there is, there is a time and place for that. And emotions are going to get high, but we do have to remember, whether we have to remember what the so-called maybe younger crowd is describing on how they want to, you know, how they interact and how they feel like it's suppressing speech or how they felt like they're carrying generational issues. But then also, that's a two-way street on the people who have been dealing with professional environments for their whole life, how they perceive it, right? So it's also how Ms. Garza is bringing up how that section of the community or society looks at how we operate, but also that a lot of the community is not really going to appreciate how that's done. I think the big thing is, is I do think it will help for all of us to be together here. I think the big part is we've kind of gotten away from the humanization side of things. Look, we break bread together between our meetings, we sit by side by side, we remember that we're human beings. And I think that's extremely important for the community and for how we handle ourselves. And I think, you know, COVID has put a strain on everything. We've all got strains in our own personal lives that have added to the stress of level of things. But I really feel like if we were here, we look at each other in the eye, we can agree to disagree, we can find common ground for the community. I think that's what's really going to make this work and flow. And it affects all of this, right, of how not just Robert rules but decorum, that all intertwines. So I'm looking forward to the day when we're all here, you know, we can look each other in the eye and agree to disagree on things and try to compromise as much as possible. And it's good for the staff, for the community, and I think for us too. So that's all I have for now.
Mr. Baker, we are back to you.
Okay, being the only person that's still meeting on Zoom, right, you know, for one, part of why I'm still meeting on Zoom is because as I've asked time and time again, I'm worried about losing Zoom as access not only for our community but for ourselves. Say one of us got diagnosed with cancer out of nowhere, and our immune system was compromised, and we didn't want to go sit in the dais. We should have the ability to just have Zoom be there. We should have the ability to just have Zoom be there as an option all the time, no matter what. I've also talked about the importance of having Zoom access for increasing the ability of other people to serve in this capacity, or having staff work in from home, or having Citizen Comments reach in, reach out to us through Zoom. But I want to speak to what Mr. Gleason just said about breaking bread and being humans and, and that human connection. Because one of the last times I saw him in person, he directly, I'm trying to think of the right words. I'm just going to say what he said. He called me a fruitcake and told me to skip on off.
That is not true. That is not true.
One, I'm talking, and for two, yes, you did. You did it during your.
I had witnesses there that will testify. I'm not going to argue with them.
They all laughed and chuckled at you too. And, and, and you, yeah, you said it. I, I don't care if you want to deny it, you said it. You also shared pictures of me wearing a dress while I was campaigning against you, right? And, and are you going to deny that too? Because I'd love for people to write in and tell it. So, so when you talk about breaking bread and, and the issues that I have with maybe some of my colleagues, that's one of them, right? How am I supposed to sit there and break bread and, and have a cordial conversation with, when just not too long ago, this person literally was offensive i- in, in an egregious manner to me, to my face. Yeah, he's going to refute it, he's going to deny it. I know what I heard and I know what he said and there were witnesses, you're right. And all of them laughed at your little joke. And, and I was like, oh my God, can you believe he said that? And they were clearly your supporters standing there. So it was Rick Henderson, it was your wife and some other guy, I don't know. So, yeah, good, good luck for us ever figuring that out, but you said it. And it's, and it's been really troublesome and hard for me to sit here and agree with you on something because I do, I have tried to work very hard to hear your ideas and listen to them and be supportive because you have good ideas, Mr. Gleason. I, I, it's been really tough for me to agree with you sometimes because in the back of my mind, that still lives there. The contention between us when we ran against each other was dirty and, and it was uncomfortable. And, and I thought we had moved past that until you made that comment during your last election. So there are a lot of issues that I have in terms of, oh, we'd all be so much nicer and more supportive and breaking bread. What you're describing has been the historical use of uncomfortable space to limit people's true interactions with each other, right? What you're describing is the kind of thing that you see people forced to laugh at a racist joke in an office and they're sitting there saying, oh, well, this is my boss that made that joke, so I can't say anything, or this is my colleague, so I need to be professional, I can't get too upset about this, right? Those are the kind of uncomfortable conversations that I've been thankful to avoid because imagine this, we go to break and I'm still riled up because I think that the things that you have said are actively hurting our community or are misrepresenting or misunderstanding, you know, different aspects of culture or the implications of something. I'm not going to be able to just let that sit and, and go, okay, well, it's time to just go and enjoy a good bite to eat next to this guy who said all these hateful things to me. And, and who, who, who I, yeah, I, I don't know where to go from that, right? So, so that's, that's part of the problem. In addition to the actual serious stuff about maintaining the ability for the public to have this access or for us to have this access and staff to have this Zoom access, I think it's important to understand that I don't have to be your friend. And I've tried to be respectful and I was met with a downright hateful argument because I was trying to outline to you where you should have been during the campaigning process on campus. Right, so there are, there are tons of things about this code of conduct that I've mentioned earlier when it came up as an executive session item, you know, talking about things like to address the present issue and let each item stand on its own, right? Let's, to me, that reads like, oh, avoid the historical context of, of, you know, who is funded by the San Marcos Police Officers Association when it comes to allocating funding to San Marcos Police Officers, right? Do you want me to not talk about those things and, and avoid that historical context? So this code of conduct, I, if you want to refer to it on the, what's it called? On the message board, April 3rd, 2021, look, it's almost a whole year ago. We brought up this agenda item, talked about it in an executive session. I expressed all of these concerns. Nothing has changed between now and then. It's only gotten worse and you all, I, I say you all, I, meaning, you know, folks like the mayor and, and you, Councilmember Gleason, continue to do things that have made our, made our meetings longer and have been disrespectful of you. And I've tried to make it very clear that when you feel disrespected, it's because I am reflecting the level of disrespect that I am feeling. And I don't, I don't know, I don't think that's healthy, I don't think it's productive, but I don't know any other way to interact with you because you, it's, it's been so difficult and personal that it, it's moved on, you know, professionally. So when, when the mayor said, we need to start by looking in the mirror, it is jaw dropping that she's not looking in the mirror as it relates to these things. Because her friends, people that have supported her in the past that I worked elbow to elbow with on their campaign, have called me and said, oh my God, I can't believe the mayor treated you that way. Talking about threatening to throw me out of the, out of the meeting that one time, right? So I, I just find it astounding that, that you all are saying these things, trying to take some moral high ground on us because I, I'll give an impassioned speech or I'll talk too long or I'll filibuster, whatever you want to call it, but you all are the ones being bullies. Like, I, I don't, I don't think you see that and, and I, and, and, you know, bringing up things like, oh, we're talking about equity and I mentioned the word white fragility and you just blew up. I mean, like, you didn't even listen to the rest of what I was saying. You were so focused on just jumping to your conclusions, Matt, right? And, and I'm guilty of it too. Hey, before you start, you know, saying, hey, well, what about the times that you interrupt people and all this stuff? Right, right, I am reflecting the disrespect that I'm already feeling. And so that's what's made all this contentious. And I feel like we have avoided addressing the real issue, which is, hey, we talked about this over a year ago and we said, maybe we need a consultant and get together to actually have like a real mediation over some of this. And that never happened because Mr. Lombreras, our former city manager, didn't make that work or maybe we didn't press it hard enough or maybe this conversation got so convoluted that it's not solvable and you all are just waiting for me to not be elected, which I think is kind of the case. And I think if I remember correctly, Mr. Gleason, you've said that to my face. So I, I'm not sure where to go with this because again, so much of it feels so personal towards me and had at one point been relegated to executive session. But when you come at me saying, be nicer, break bread with us, we should be more respectful, I am not feeling that from you and that's why you're not feeling it from me.
Mayor, my.
Hold on. It looks like Mr. Baker is finished, so Mr. Prather, you are next.
I was just gonna, you know, we're talking about three subjects. And the one thing about council members on the dais, and I heard Councilmember Baker bring this up about, you know, not having citizens be able to, you know, Zoom in or even staff. That's why it says council members on the dais. I think having the ability for citizens to chime in on the video, even actually for us, if we have to disperse, if, if there's another COVID wave, God forbid that doesn't happen or something that, you know, that we're not thinking of, that we always have this in our back pocket to use the Zoom-type meetings. But today was a perfect example of, I think this was one of our better meetings until the, this agenda item because we were concise to the point, moving through, moving through our items. But it was also another meeting that showed the difficulties of when we're, where we're not meeting together on the dais and the technical difficulties that come with that. So, but nowhere in, in that agenda item that we say that, you know, we do, we want to completely get rid of the ability for citizens to video in or even staff. Because, you know, having our staff stay here past midnight, you know, it's probably not good for morale, but I definitely think all the council members should be here on the dais, so on that particular item. On the other item about time on agenda items or do we want to enact some type of Roberts Rules of Order? I've heard, you know, I don't know if I've heard the majority of our colleagues tonight say that they would be in supportive of that.
I don't believe we have gone around the table and seen that majority. We may, but I haven't asked that yet.
Okay, and like I said, that, what, the idea I was having was after a certain time on an agenda item, we enact these rules. Like if we're on an agenda item for 30 minutes or an hour, that we automatically have, hey, now we're enacting the, you have two more times to speak on this agenda item and then, or a certain time period and then we're going to vote. And that's only after, you know, an extensive amount of time on that agenda item. But rather it be 30 minutes or an hour.
And that's why I've said, let's set our own rules. Don't worry about what's in Roberts, let's figure out what we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything else?
No, ma'am.
And let me just jump in because you did address it. I don't believe that there is any intent to get rid of Zoom access for our meetings. There are citizens who are able to speak and they Zoom in, staff Zooms in. I had told Mr. Lombreras that I'd hoped council would come in, but how he wanted to deal with staff and, and them zooming in was fine. Ms. Reyes is doing whatever she feels she needs to do. I agree if, if we're, if a staff member has one part on the program and it may not come up till nine, I, if Ms. Reyes is fine with it, I'm fine with them zooming in and I think we should keep that option open. So there, there is no intent to do away with Zoom in totally and go back to the way that we were because I think we have seen the advantages. But I agree with you, I think it best if we're all here. Ms. Garza, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to push back a little bit on the, what I heard from Mr. Gleason in terms of the generational divide and something about the younger crowd. So I, I think that, yeah, generational differences, I mean, it does impact, right? Folks' perceptions. But I think it's more of a, it's not a younger crowd, it's a more diverse crowd, right? So, I mean, historically, like what has been the composition of city council, right? Like now we have more diversity in terms of race, gender, class and ability. And I'll give you an example. Kind of countering this social construct of, of professional environment, which again, I urge you guys to look into even the social construct of professional environment and in relation to power dynamics. Just Google that, you'll find some good reads. But an example is, for example, those with different, different levels or differing levels of ability is, is an example of more diversity, so whether physical or otherwise, right? These folks have historically been left out of spaces where policy is shaped or big decisions are made. So I have a chronic immune illness, right? So I need to stretch, right? I'm not going to be sitting here, you know, standing up straight with my hands on, on my lap. I mean, also, come on, you guys, I'm sitting here five ever, like, really. And so what people perceive to be rude, specifically citing Mr. Amaya, I think that's who you're referring to, the same person who comes here every meeting, what he perceives to be rude is rooted in his oppressive definition of what a professional environment is, right? I am trying to work with the body and the illness that I have, right? And so I'm not going to apologize for that. And I also even like remove that, remove, remove that part from the equation. And why do people feel some kind of way about people fidgeting in their chair? Like, let's talk about folks who have more neurodiversion. I got my fidgets, you guys, Jude knows. I have to, I have coping mechanisms for my ADHD. The value in having these, abiding by these less antiquated conceptualizations of things like decorum and professional environment and professionalism, the beauty of, of acknowledging that they're rooted in oppression and, and, and lack of inclusivity is that you have different people coming to the table, people who can talk about, oh, are we considering folks with different abilities when we are, you know, developing this policy or X, Y and Z? So I just wanted to share that perspective. Yes, I, I do think it's valid that there is a generational divide. I even had lunch with, with some former members of council recently and we talked about how their, their, their friends, the folks that they, that they talk to often, they do, they have issues with, with how we, you know, our meetings are going so long. We're always yelling at each other, personal attacks. And I, that was, aside from some of y'all, that was like the first time I had heard that there's a group of people who feels that way. Because the people that I speak to regularly, they view these more raw, more candid conversations as a breath of fresh air, right? The fact that sometimes, I think each of us have, has gone there and asked questions and it's really obvious that we're about to disrupt a norm and we ask them anyways. A, a lot of our community members are like, yes, this is, this is the raw, authentic representation that we want, right? And so it's just interesting hearing different people give their summary of, of the perceptions of the folks that they surround themselves with. Because I don't know a lot of people who are watching the meeting and are like, oh, council, they don't know how to behave. They're like, oh man, yeah, I want to see that realness. I want to see people ask each other the tough questions. We shouldn't just be calling each other out or calling each other in during election season. We should be, we should be asking these critical questions all the time. So that's just like another perspective. And, and again, I don't think that that's so much generational because to be honest, a lot of the folks that I hear that from are like my mom's age. I think it's just, we're talking to different people, y'all. So. Oh, wait, just kidding, there's one more. To Mr. Baker's suggestion about, I mean, he like mentioned that, like, we've talked about this before, whatever, in April of last year, and I forwarded this to Stephanie, we had like a really hot and heated conversation and it was an email. And I strongly urged Bert and council to seek culturally relevant professional development and consulting services to assist us in increasing awareness of our values, our biases, our beliefs and our stereotypes, expanding knowledge of diverse groups and their values, beliefs, communication styles, perspective and experiences of oppression, and developing skills to work effectively across backgrounds by using this awareness of self and knowledge of others, right? And then also exploring what a culture of respect means when promoting justice. And he had indicated that he, yeah, like, we're going to do that, it's Gucci during our one-on-ones. When, and I think we did talk about training, but what ended up happening? We got that weird professional development with, you know, I'm talking about, I, I texted you about it. We ended up getting a training, it was like an online webinar.
Oh, the common ground. I think that was coincidental that that came up.
Oh, no, it wasn't because that's part of the body of the email. He's, in response, he said, we're going to, here's a training. It's, it's, it's about seeking common ground, talking about differences. And the first speaker is quite frankly, the opposite of that.
Yeah, I wasn't thrilled with the.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, we should consider this. We should consider some training, you guys, so we can all trustful and work better together. That's all I got.
And let me address that because you're right, we did talk about it. You said at the time that you thought you could find someone. And in my meetings with Mr. Lombreras, we were, I kept asking him, has Ms. Garza gotten back with you yet? And that's what he was waiting on, was for you to come forward with that. Maybe he should, maybe he shouldn't have, but that's what he was waiting on.
What I'm going to do is I am going to forward to Ms. Reyes the exact thing that I had sent previously. And by also adding, I often volunteer stuff and actually owe Stephanie and, and, uh, other guy, Joe, some documents, but, sorry, I'm like half a week late. But I, I had that conversation with Bert. I was like, Bert, you're really, you, you see the chaos that's on council right now and you're really going to wait on me to, to, to look up consultants? Like, if you're seeing that I'm not sending you something, I ended up sending him something, but it's like, baby, you got, you got a lot of zeros on your paycheck and you're really going to be waiting on me? Like, you can't have somebody do that for you? Take, take, take 15 minutes? I'm just saying. When we talk about accountability and people doing their job, I'm like, really? Come on now.
Yeah, I think it was because you said you've had someone or you could get someone and it was out of respect for you.
That, that's always a story. That's always a story. I don't buy it. I think they, I'm like, I'm going to stop there, but.
Okay.
That, I will, I will forward Stephanie or Ms. Reyes some of the stuff that I, that I had. And I preface that to Mr. Lombreras, like, these are just the tip of the iceberg. Devotes a staff time, like an hour, to, to, to unpacking this further, right? I ain't got staff, you guys, it's just me and I work two and a half jobs.
Retreat, Mayor, that's what we need.
That's what we were going to do and we all agreed to it. Did you have anything else, Ms. Garza? Okay. I'm going to jump in here because I can't raise my hand in the software because I'm a host and that's what lets me recognize y'all. I want to talk about the, the personal attacks. And I'm not talking about constructive criticism or what people accept as constructive criticism. I'm talking about the, the. criticism. I'm talking about the vicious attacks, and I think we all know what it is. They're disgusting, and I would say that it's time for them to stop. There's no time, there's no place for personal attacks on council members during council meetings. From Robert's Rules, almost every version of Code of Conduct that I can find, personal attacks are addressed, and they're prohibited. They take up time unnecessarily. They make us look bad to the public. But in my opinion, that the person who looks the worst is the one doing the attack. While it may provide some momentary satisfaction, smugness, and a reason to smirk, and a few of your constituents may think it's funny or a good idea, I assure you the vast majority here watching do not like it. And in my years of watching council members in their subsequent elections, the voters don't like it either. The chance of being reelected goes down substantially. Who wants a representative exhibiting atrocious behavior? It also destroys collegiality, and we need to be able to work together, and personal vicious attacks do not help. So one of the things that I was going to ask was, I said, we can make our own rules, was for a new Code of Conduct rule, and that's simply that when a council member begins a personal vicious attack, that I would call them out. If I need to ask for agreement from a couple of people, I can do that. My thought is that I will ask them to stop. If they're, do not stop, then if they're on Zoom, I'll mute them and get staff to put them into a different status, so they can't just unmute. If they're in chambers, I'll ask them to stop. If they don't, council members agree with me, I'll ask them to leave the room. And if they don't, I would ask our police officer to assist them in leaving the chambers. If they're being disruptive to the process, we're not progressing, and, and we need, we just need to take care of that. And that would be that, once you start the personal attack, that means that you forfeit your right to speak on that agenda item for that meeting. Can come back for the next agenda item, but it would be stopped on that one. So I'm going to ask that that be given some consideration, since we've talked about the personal attacks.
Mayor, I'm going to do some examples, because it sounds like your, your outline of that, and specifically your use of the word smirk is really targeting me, because you've called me a Mr. Smirky, Mr. Smirkey Pants before and things like that. So is this a personal attack, or is this allowed because it's you saying? And again, which are the personal attacks? Are the things like mentioning that Shane Scott and Mark Gleason and yourself are part of, like, you know, the San Marcos Police Officers Association, that you all have benefited from that? Are those attacks enlightening me? Because I'm not sure.
If you make a statement of fact, as in, I was endorsed by the SMPWA, that's not a problem. It's when you get into the really attacking things and the attacking someone personally and their character, that's where I'm talking about it. To just make a statement of fact, like I was endorsed, that's not what I'm talking about.
When does it become a personal attack?
During the lobbying, during the lobbying discussion, the personal attacks on Mr. Scott specifically, about the SMPWA and the campaigning, that really was, in my opinion, out of line. A simple statement of fact, Mr. Baker, you asked, a simple statement of fact, I would not have objected to. It was the viciousness in your manner and your voice that was part of it, not just what was being said, but the whole surrounding attitude.
So because I was, I was angry, or as sometimes described in these contexts, like, I was being like uppity? Is that, is that what you were trying to insinuate there? That, like, I was just?
I have never, I have never used the word uppity.
Right. But that's, that's the line you're drawing. It's a similar use of, hey, your emotions are there, you're being caught up in the moment, and in your opinion, that is what makes it a vicious attack, even though I was still stating facts.
I think that someone can be emotional about something and it not be a nasty, vicious personal attack on your colleague. I think that's possible. You can be emotional about stuff. We all do. That's okay.
Mayor, you said, though, that it was your opinion. The fact that I wasn't using vulgarities or things that are outlined and dismissive as things in Robert's Rules, right, and in other forms of documentation, what, what grounds, other than I was being too loud, would you have had there? I don't understand the purpose of that, other than to silence somebody who's disagreeing with you vociferously.
It wasn't the loudness. It was just, and some people may, may, may have a difference of opinion. I will say that, in a way, I feel not the same type of attack, but I feel attacked by Ms. Garza earlier, by saying that I don't treat everyone equally, because, but, but, but I listened to her. She has said it before. I have looked back on what I did. Did I do something like that? Did I, did I treat her differently from someone else? If I did, it wasn't on purpose, and I, I am not trying to do that.
I also made a point to say that it was my perception. So I'm not saying, like, you're unequal, like, it is my perception.
And that's why my first emotional reaction is to attack, but that's, it was an attack. But that I listened, and you did say that it was your perception. And so I think we can have a discussion about it. So I would not put what you said tonight in the realm of what I'm talking about here with personal attacks. I would not put it in that, in that realm.
So as a mechanism to expedite the meeting, you're saying that anytime you, or I guess anybody at that point, felt like it was a personal attack, we would take a break, we'd take a vote, we'd remove somebody, we wouldn't allow them to vote on that agenda item, they wouldn't have any time to discuss on anything. And so that would be more efficient than what we're currently doing, which is talking about something where you could use Call the Question, again, to end debate or end discussion on an issue.
And maybe, I think maybe calling the question is going to be the solution to that.
So, no, but you're avoiding my question.
Oh, say it again, then.
Do you think that having this mechanism for voting on whether something is a personal attack, when we know that, you know, there are, uh, let's see, the right way to say this, that, that there are conversations that happen between council members outside of the dais, right? That you, some of you all are friends, you are meeting behind the scenes or having private phone calls and things like that. And so there, there could be an instance with the most malicious of councils, not that this is one, but there could be an instance where, as soon as I speak up in a way that any of you all could, for whatever reason, deem negative, you remove me from being able to vote on something, you change the math of what's needed for things like super majorities, as well as just basic, you know, majorities, right? And so how, how does any of all that sound fair or reasonable? And why was that your suggestion?
It was because it's a disruption of the meeting, and we're not progressing in what we're discussing and what we're here to do. It's when we get away from the business of the council that, that I'm concerned. And personal attacks is one time when we get disruptive. There's other ways that things get disruptive, and we're not progressing towards our goal of coming to some kind of conclusion on the topic that we're talking about.
Mayor, may I jump in? Like, on our San Marcos Code of Ordinances, under 2.045 Rules of Decorum, says the mayor and the council and a presiding officer or members of a boards of commission will endeavor to ensure that the meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal affront, profanity, or threats of violence. It then goes into a whole, the rules of this section shall be enforced by the following manner. The presiding officer will request that person who is violating the rule cease the violation, and it kind of escalates. If the violation continues, the presiding officer will warn that person, you know, so, hold on, Councilman Baker, the reason I'm bringing this up, this is what we currently have in our Code of Ordinances.
Correct.
Right. I remember reading those things, and to, to my point, I don't think I defamed anybody. I don't think I.
Wait, hold on, let Mr. Baker speak. Y'all stop. Mr. Baker has the floor for the moment.
So, so in those instances where I've been asked to stop, I typically do, right?
No.
I get muted?
No. Rarely, if ever. Rarely, if ever, do you stop when I say, stop the personal attacks. You'll come right back at it.
Because that's your opinion, and I don't consider it a personal attack for all the reasons that I've mentioned. I'm stating what I think is historical. I think that the tone of my voice does not change, whether that's an attack or whether that is just a fact, right? If that's the metric that you're asking for, and I need to talk like this the entire time and make sure that I'm saying something just as poignant and concerned and frustrated, if this tone of voice is going to be helpful for us having a more functional meeting, I can do that. But I think that it's really manipulative and weird to ask me to talk in this tone of voice, instead of talking how I actually want to talk, right?
Hold, and hold on, Councilman Baker, and I think this should be our nuclear option. This isn't something, I mean, if this were to happen, it'd be the first time I'd be aware of something like this happening in San Marcos's history. So it's, it's a, like I said, it's the nuclear option, and, but it's already, it's already in statute and ordinance under our Rules of Decorum.
Yeah. And, and, and the other thing that I didn't mention earlier on the attack was that it wasn't just once. It was over and over and over and over and over again on the same topic. I think that you had clearly made your point about your opinion of, of what the San Marcos Police Officers Association did and Mr. Scott's campaign, all of which was legal. And I think making that point in a calm tone of voice once is, is not terrible. But to keep going back and just picking at it and picking at it and picking at it, that was also what I was seeing as an attack, is the escalation of and repeating. That's part of it. And I didn't, I didn't mention that before, and I should have. I'm just listing this as one of the options. I don't want to talk about this part all night, but when it's disrupting the meeting and we're not progressing towards our goal of coming to a conclusion, at that point, that's when I say that, you know, you remove someone from the meeting, or you get them to stop, because we need to get back to the business at hand, once that point has been made.
And, Councilman Baker, I mean, I just want to make one more thing, and hopefully, you know, positive note. One of our last meetings, I forgot what the agenda item was, but we were kind of, I think everyone was kind of confused with everyone's intent, and we were just kind of talking and talking and talking.
Utility?
Yes, utility. And then Councilman Baker kind of, I think, sensed the frustration and was like, let me chime in and help, you know, deliver what I think everyone is thinking, but we're just, you know, talking past each other. You know, those are the kind of conversations that add to the dais, that bring things to City Hall, that, you know, this is what our citizens expect us to do, is to make things happen. And that's the kind of decorum that I would like to see here from the dais.
Yeah. And let me say something else about the coming prepared. I did not mean to say or imply that you come in with your mind made up. I think we have all made modifications, like you said earlier, someone said we try to compromise. So I'm not saying you can't change your mind and not listen to your colleagues. That's certainly fine. And if you want to react with an unprepared remark to something that a colleague has just said, that's perfectly fine. But as long as you've done your homework and thought it through, but I think it's wonderful when someone brings up another idea and we go, hey, I mean, I've changed my mind or modified my thoughts plenty of times based on what my colleagues have said. And I think sometimes we come up with much better decisions when we come up with, with a consensus and a compromise. So I'm going to drop my topic right now, if y'all are okay with that, and go back around to the hands raised, and we might get back to that, we might not. Mr. Gleason, you're next.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Look, I just respond to a couple of things. And I literally, when I started, you know, my statement off earlier, literally trying to find common ground here. And I know when we talk about decorum, it's, we're literally talking about personal attacks. And Councilman Baker just made accusations of things he may have heard or what he thinks he heard, or things people said. Look, I got called a racist during the campaign. I had people go around my neighborhood and said I voted to flood people out, when I got flooded twice. I've never said that publicly. I haven't used that against you. I haven't gone to the public and said, you ought to hear what they said about me. You know what it's called? Every one of us, when we're campaigning, has things said about us. When the campaign's over, the votes are counted, we're now colleagues. And we have to sit up here and be colleagues. And as far as the Zoom thing, no one is talking about taking it away from the public. No one is talking, taking it away as an option. But we are talking about none of us having been together for two years. There's a big difference here. I have no problem with us keeping Zoom as an option. Look, I've got a child at home. Somebody could get sick, get caught up in traffic, who knows, right? We're not discussing that. So I, that's off the table, as far as, like, we're trying to stop Zoom. That's not it at all. In fact, I think it's been for the better for staff and for the rest of us. But when we talk about personal attacks, it's literally, I think what we have to do is put our big boy pants on when the campaigns are over and realize we're now colleagues, and come together. And I know you don't, you don't, may not believe that, but I'm willing to do that. And I literally look at all of you as my colleagues. The voters decided to put you up here. And I can't stop that. I can't change that. And you, and you absolutely can bring something to the table that I will agree with, or change my mind or compromise on. I'm a very compromising individual. I totally believe that's how this process works. And I do think it is hurting for you not being here, and for us not having been here for a long time. The few times we've had meetings all together have been extremely efficient and have been very cordial. So I, I, I'm looking forward to the day when we all get back together, we're up here being cordial, we can stop the personal attacks, stop making accusations of things that go on during a campaign. Campaigns are over, right? Don't campaign from the dais. The voters have decided. We're here. So I know, and see, I know, and, and, look, when it comes to decorum, physical reactions to things are exactly what a lot of people are talking about. And I, and I think when it gets back to generational, I think a lot of it gets back to nonverbal communication and how important it is. Look people in the eyes, communicate, be professional. I think a lot of people do appreciate that. And I would never be in a business meeting with a CEO of a company and roll my eyes at them. I guarantee I'm getting fired. And rightfully so. It's disrespectful. And it does drag out the meetings, because it does hurt people's feelings. Look, bring things to the table. Let's try to make things efficient for staff and for the community. We're hurting the community as much as we're hurting ourselves. And it's bad government, too, because the more likely that there's animosity between all of us, the less likely we are to find common ground to make things work. And that's literally what this comes down to. And I know some of you may not think that I care about all of you. I truly do. I truly do. I think we all can find ground to get along to make this city a wonderful place. Because I think that's why we all did this, not to attack each other or make political points or statements. Because, believe me, I have had my heart broken during the campaigns, the things that have been said about me, that were completely untruth and ridiculous. And we all have had that happen to us. So I think it's, we separate that out. Those times are over. We're at the dais. We need to be here for the sake of the community and find common ground to make this work. And I think that's what will speed up these meetings. And the humanization process is a big deal. One of the big things is that COVID has done to all this, has separated us as a community, and whether it's organizations not coming together, us having groups and events together. Those are the fun things. And I think that has hurt decorum, too, where I enjoy being out in the community and we round each other, you know, and art reveal, those kind of things, right? At a benefit for something. So I'm looking forward to all of that coming back, that we can get along, and even if we disagree, and try to make this place, community, a better place, and try to do the right thing for everybody, and not make this personal. That's all I have to say.
And we have been together for some executive sessions or for some evaluations. We were all in the same room at the same time, and I really feel like we had a cohesiveness and a, a single goal, and that, and I think we worked, we worked well together in those cases where we were all in the same room at the same time. So just my opinion, my two cents. Mr. Gonzalez, it's your turn.
Can I take 30 minutes as well, Mayor? Well, I usually don't.
We got no limits now.
Well, thank you. Well, talking about the Zoom, I think it's, it's a great idea for the people that cannot come to the meetings. I think we're going to keep, it sounds like everybody's in agreement with that, and I'm glad to hear that. When it comes to the council, I think it's vital that all of us will be here. The city needs to see us united. Not only us, but also the key players from the city staff have to be here. There's leaders as well, and I think they should be here representing our city as well. But Mark, everything you said, it really touched my heart, man, and I think you're sincere. Let's just move forward and make the best of it and, you know, come back to the dais, guys. That's all I have to say, Mayor. I think everything's been said here in the last few minutes by everyone else. Thank you.
All right. And we are back to Mr. Baker's turn again.
Yeah. So, Councilmember Gleason, I'm not going to let you gaslight me on that issue. I know what you said directly to my face. I saw you and your friend. issue. I know what you said directly to my face. I saw you and your friends laugh about it. And 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 it it makes me hear the words that you just said while Mr. Gonzalez was a part of that. That is all falling on, it's crocodile tears to me. I don't believe a single word of it. I just need to make that clear. Um, as far as this like idea of, you know, like my nonverbal communications, those aren't gonna go away just because I'm sitting next to you. I am, I am not going to just be nicer just because it makes you uncomfortable and because I'm I'm speaking my truth. When I see or hear you say something that's uneducated or directly targeting me or poking fun at the way that I think that governance should be done, yeah, I'm gonna react to that. I'm not gonna be professional because it's more convenient to you all and doesn't hurt your feelings. If I'm getting upset at something and my smirk makes you, uh, uncomfortable or makes you think that I'm not taking you seriously, it's because it's not. I'm not gonna sit up there and act. I didn't get elected to be an actor. I got elected to represent people and and to do do the work, right? So I'm here to do the work. When we're talking about tech issues, I have never once been at the center of any tech issue that we've had for Zoom. Not once, ever. And what Mr. Couch was referring to is like, oh, well, this took too long to set up. That would have needed to be done whether I was there or not. So it's a moot point. All of y'all's idea about, oh, this would make meetings more efficient or make this tech problem go away. I'm the only person out in the Zoom world, aside from staff, that can tell you if Zoom wasn't looking right, or that could respond to you if we hear you or not. So 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 all of that, to me, is just, it's nonsense. It's some something that you you all want me in there. I get that. But guess what? The COVID variant in the UK is on the rise. And guess what? We're like usually just a few weeks to a month behind that. So why would I want to go back into the dais when we're in this big question mark period again that we've made the mistake time and time again over the course of this pandemic, coming back too early and lifting restrictions and acting like everything's laissez-faire again and normal again, right? It's not. We're still dealing with some of this stuff. And every time I go into a meeting, you know, I'm I'm asked, I'm wearing masks, right? And if I went down there and I if if I asked you all to wear masks, I don't think you'd act yes. You'd be like, oh, it's, you know, it's my right or whatever. If if you all want me down there, wear a mask. Wear a mask out of respect for me. That's all I'm asking. If 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 it's that important for you all to have a cordial meeting, I haven't had COVID. My wife hasn't had COVID. I don't know what it would wreak on my household if we got COVID, right? So, yeah, I'm afraid. You wanna you wanna be honest about it? Yeah, I'm still double masking when I go to work and work on clients. And the fact that none of you all seem to really care about that or or think that that's at 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 all at the center of why I've been so resistant is really frustrating, right? And it and it just comes off as, you know, frankly, ableist or or dismissive of the concerns that I have and and what I think is still appropriate governance. You know, I I think that there's a multitude of reasons to to keep that Zoom access for city council members, as I mentioned. And and again, the COVID variant being being one of them that's still out there. Um, you know, this idea of just like moving forward and just like get get over it is is how I'm hearing, right? Like, just get over it. You know, these things were said in the past. That was the election time. Get over it. Put on your big boy pants, whatever that means, and get over it. But that is not how trauma works. And let's be honest, what what you and I went through was traumatic. It resulted in this tension that's bottled up in us, and it has not quite been addressed.
You you saying you saying I said something is not as traumatic as a natural disaster that I went through. And and the things that were said about me during that time. And so no, no, words, words are, words can be traumatic, but the things that I went through and the things that were said about me during that time were extremely traumatic.
Yeah, and and similar to what you've said about me, right? Like, I I don't, I'm
I'm not trying to downplay what you dealt with. What I'm saying is, you're asking me to move on from something, and clearly, there's still some beef that hasn't been cleared. And that's not healthy. No therapist would say, yeah, just forget about it.
How about using the word racist?
But but Mark, Mark, we're not fighting the campaign over again.
I know. I don't want to, but he just won't stop.
Well, but you won't either. So that's not not helping. Um,
Right.
But but Mr. Baker, I
Yeah.
I think that it's important to consider
Oh, God.
setting aside your feelings for someone so that um, so that we can do the business of the city. Where'd he go?
Oh, my phone died. Your microphone?
I bet his phone died. Okay. Well, we'll hold that. Uh, as a matter of fact, we've been here for a couple of hours. Would y'all like to just take, oh, he's back. Oh.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. We figured we figured your phone died. The the only thing that that I was saying is is e- even though you've got, you know, opinions about people and and campaigns and and I'll tell you, when I was elected, there was a council member that did not want me elected, and he did not treat me very nicely, um, on the dais. And all I could do was just try to get past it because we had things to do. Getting back in his face was not going to be productive. And and so that's just, you know, I know it's hard. I'm not saying it's easy, but sometimes you just kind of have to
Mayor, that's like dealing with an abusive relationship. That is not pulling it together. That is, that is, if you're HR manager and you told me, I have a colleague that is making me really uncomfortable, and I said, buck up? Like, that's not appropriate. You you have to confront people when they're making you uncomfortable or making you feel less than. Our job isn't to just be professional. Being professional is that. Ms. Reyes has an HR background. She wouldn't give you that that advice, right? Like,
And and you've you've mischaracterized what I said is, yes, some, anyway, we're not getting anywhere on that one. Um, Ms. Garza has her hand up, and I'm going to ask each of you, where are we? Have we landed on on anything that we can move forward on? And, um, and then we need to go ahead and and close this out because we we've had a lot of things said. Uh, I think some people got some things off their chest. Um, but I'm not sure that we have come up with any additional rules. I'm not sure that we have come up with any solutions, uh, to these three topics that we're discussing. And if you've got it, if you've got a solution, that would be great. I'd like to hear it. And, um, and maybe it's something that we just need to contemplate and 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 come back and discuss another time. Ms. Garza.
Uh, well, uh, part of my solution is training. I just forwarded to Stephanie or to Ms. Reyes the a PDF of some facilitators. Um, I think it's a really good one. It's really long. It's like 26 pages. Um, so, yeah, I think we would be good with like a moderator that's like a like a third party, uh, not anybody that we know, um, whose area of expertise is is unpacking a bunch of this stuff. And then, um, just a last comment. Um, again, you guys, I guess I'm gonna have to do the homework and send you guys information on my perspective on professionalism because, um, I I just wanted to state, I'm not gonna apologize for my nonverbals and my facial expressions. I don't think they're rude. I think that they're genuine and authentic. And I want people to know, um, I don't have a problem with people knowing my reactions to them. Am I gonna sit here and be like? No. Um, I I I think that that's authentic, uh, relationship building, right? I I'm not, when we talk about, we're gonna go break bread after this and have dinner. I I feel like phony going in there and being like, like, we just, we just argued for like 30 minutes. Um, uh, you know, I don't know. It's just, that's just weird. Like, pretending we're all kumbaya, that's weird. We're humans. Humans are complex. Um, like I always say, the reactions that I that happen in my face are almost involuntary, but I'm not gonna make a conscious effort to stop them. And in terms of professional settings, I don't know what all everybody's CV is, but I've worked in multiple departments and, um, colleges. And, uh, just yesterday, I was talking to my former director at CDGS, and he said I was the best employee and the most professional. So, um, there's that. I guess different strokes for different folks. Different people have different conceptualizations of professionalism. Um, all I have to say, I'm gonna go drink water. My solution is, we need to do training to unpack the root of a lot of this, uh, differences in perspectives. Uh, I I do appreciate trying to come up with solutions, but a lot of this is rooted in subjectiveness, right? Like, I, like, what what is a direct attack, right? Is if you add fluffy words and put a bow on something before, then it's not a direct attack? Or or is it, is it a direct attack just when the cameras are rolling? Um, but when the cameras are off and we think we're unmuted, then we can run our mouth, right? Like, mm. Um, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere in terms of structures other than, uh, starting with an authentic, facilitated conversation. Or how Mr. Scott said, like, some kind of retreat. That's all I got.
Okay, so I will, um, consider that I'm starting with you for solutions. And so facilitated, uh, conversation, perhaps a retreat-ish nature. Um, and did you have anything else?
No, retreat.
Uh, yeah, I mean, everything that I that I had, I read out loud earlier from that email from April of last year. Um, I think doing the research that I did, trying to unpack what our issues were since the very beginning, um, I think, yeah, those professional developments infused with the, what is it, a retreat, talking about, um, increasing our awareness of our values, biases, beliefs, and stereotypes. I really do think when you can like better understand where people are coming from, you can have more grace and empathy. I mean, Mr. Scott and I, we disagree on a lot of things, but, um, I feel like we always leave room for the possibility that we can be growing as as humans. I feel, um, the same way about a lot of folks that I that I work with, where we're, we disagree on a lot of things that I'm very passionate about. Um, we we still work together. Um, but when it's like a whole bunch of us, it gets a little bit more complicated, right? Than like two or three.
Everyone you had.
That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Prather, your 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 thoughts? And if you agree with the facilitated retreat, please, please advise.
Yeah, I think a retreat would be useful, um, for us. And then another thing I want to circle back with was about the, uh, the time on agenda items was, was there a consensus in addressing that and making some changes with the idea if we spend 30 minutes or an hour on an agenda item, do we enact some type of, you have a 10-minute time period to speak on the agenda item?
Well, if we've already spent an hour and we give everybody 10 more minutes, that's another hour.
I know.
If we've already spent an hour, I I would hope
30 minutes.
that people would have gotten most of their thoughts out and, uh, what they want to say to their colleagues and try to convince them or whatever. I don't know that another hour, there may be times when we have another hour of content. I'm gonna suggest, in my experience, probably not. I mean, maybe go around the table once or twice more,
Mm-hmm.
you know, for let people do their final thoughts before we vote on something.
Then you two-minute warning, each two minutes.
Yeah. Okay, so you're saying after 30 to 60 minutes, then, uh, limit on time?
Yes.
Wrap-up time, two minutes.
Uh, put you down for that. You're a yes on that one, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Then did you have anything else?
Survival retreat, in the woods, retreat.
Oh, Lord, I'll die.
Okay, regular one.
Yeah, okay. So you're a yes on the retreat. Okay, I've got you down on that. Mr. Baker.
Uh, yes to the retreat. And then, um, if you again refer to the initial questions that I asked of you, Mayor, on the first time that you posted the code of conduct, that will reflect my concerns there, um, about, you know, the the verbiage used, uh, the oppressive nature of some of these rules, things of that nature, the the unfair distribution of, right, like, in instances where you're out of order, Mayor, or using personal attacks, the people that would be responsible for holding you to accord would be Councilmember Scott or Councilmember Garza as your mayor pro temp and deputy, right? Um, but we haven't seen that happen. And we we know, we've, I've heard from community members that they thought you've been out of order. So I don't know if if we're asking for these things, um, but you're still presiding over them. If we, you clearly haven't established a enough rapport between your team to make them feel comfortable to call you to the mat over, uh, over issues. Um, so I think that, Mayor, as I've asked before, that you reflect and not, as the presiding chair, not interrupt me when I'm speaking to make some point of of that I maybe didn't speak clearly enough, right? You can reserve your time and wait till I'm done and correct it then, instead of interrupting me where, which typically sets me off to be frustrated by your interruption and and seems to make the tension between the two of us much worse than it was. Because when I chair our Criminal Justice Reform Committee meetings, we don't have this kind of tension between the two of us. We seem to work very quickly and efficiently in the hour that we're given in those. Um, so I don't know if it's a matter of how you run a meeting versus how I run a meeting, or if maybe, as you outlined, in your years and years of experience, you've never had a council issue like this. Well, now you're on the council and you're in charge of running the meeting. So if there hasn't been an issue for years and years and years, and now all of a sudden there is, it might not just be your colleagues, it might be who is presiding over the meeting. And I again ask that you reflect on that and that you recognize that everything I just said is a perception, it's not a reality, before you start nailing me down on what you did or didn't do. This is how I feel, and I'm tired of you all kind of gaslighting me into saying, well, you do it too, or, you know, that's not true, or you misspoke slightly, and so I'm gonna pick apart your argument using some logical fallacy. I I think that that's part of what has made these meetings so much longer than they need to be.
And I didn't say that this is the first or only time it's happened. Matter of fact, I just recounted where there are problems from before. Um, I usually wait until you're done, but when you say something that, whether it's a lie or a misstatement, and it is so egregious that the rest of your argument is based on it, then yes, I'm gonna stop and call you out on it. And that's just gonna happen. Our Criminal Justice Reform Committee meetings are a completely different type of meeting. I don't think it's fair to, um, characterize your wonderfulness as as chair of those versus me as mayor here. And since you want to talk about what people tell you, what I hear so much is, oh, my God, what is Max doing? And 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 how how can you possibly let him do that much, talk that much, et cetera? And honestly, I defend you way more often than you would probably ever believe about he's an elected official of his own. He gets to speak. But what I get hammered on is, why do I let Max talk so much? And I am defending your right to speak way more than you will ever know.
Mayor, if you recall in our conversations, I have like a ton of respect for you, right? Like, I I don't, I I think that maybe you've forgotten that since we've become colleagues. Um, because I do. I I it might not sound like it, but guess what? I worked on your campaigns for a reason, right? Like, you paid me money to work on your campaigns at one point.
Not the last one.
Right, I know. Because I didn't support you in the last one.
That's right. So let's not mislead the public.
Right, so, right. So again, what I'm trying to get to is, I have, I have respect for you. I I understand that you you have this, like, depth of experience. Um, I don't remember where I was going with that. But I I think that when it comes to the code of conduct, that's what I was gonna refer to, is, you know, in instances where I've said something that's a lie or so egregious or or as you represented it, you know, again, sometimes it's just your opinion that it's a lie, and it is rooted maybe in some kind of like national level data or something like that. Or you haven't listened to the whole of my conversation, which is in the code of conduct, right? It's in the code of conduct to let me finish speaking and to listen and hear me out before you make assumptions and get on your jump to conclusions, Matt. So so on one hand, you're asking us to listen to each other, and on the other hand, you find it entirely appropriate to interrupt me because you've deemed something, and you're the presiding officer, you can do that. That's your job, literally. But, um, it's, it hasn't been helpful to making the meetings more efficient.
Don't respond, please.
Oh, that's where I was going with with the with the respect I have for you. I have no doubt that you defended, because you do, you're doing the job. You know what the job is. You you've said time and time again, I'm a duly elected official, and you're gonna give me my time. I seen you go to bat for me on that. I don't doubt that. But what I what I what I do doubt and what what frustrates me is, like I said, some of these microaggressions, some of these just things that that make me feel like we're not peers, or that you're not holding everybody to the same account, right? And 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 again, I'm I'm asking you to just reflect on the fact that that's how I feel. And I don't know what else to ask for. So I'll just be quiet.
Okay, but 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 I'm going around the table to conclude this conversation, and I'm asking folks, what do you have, one or two ideas or three on what we want to do? Ms. Garza suggested a facilitated retreat. So far, we've got
Right.
four people, including you. Uh, Mr. Prather suggested that after a 30 or 60 minutes that we have spent on an agenda item, that perhaps we limit each person's time. Uh, and Mr. Scott
The paper.
agreed with that. And I need to ask you where you And I need to ask you where you are on that one. And do you have any, something concrete that we could actually put down on paper as to what we can do? This is your opportunity to give something. I'm not sure about that whole list that you had at the beginning. I didn't write all of that down, so I'm going to need some help with that. But did you have anything else? And where are you on the time limit?
No time limit. And yes to the retreat, right? You already have that down.
I got that.
What I think would be helpful, can't believe I have to repeat this because it sounds like you weren't listening, but sure, it would be helpful for you to reserve your corrections until people are actually finished speaking. Whether you think it's a lie, or whether you think it is irrelevant, or what have you, it's not productive to interrupt people to make that point, to put a smirk on your own face to do it. Because you're like smirking tit-for-tat with me, and it's just not helpful. And I think that that's like where the dysfunction is partially coming from. Is you point at me as being smirky and saying tacky things, and then you, in your correction of that, are smirking on the side well. So like, I just, it seems...
Yeah, you're repeating yourself, I got that. I'm looking for something that we can put on a code of conduct list.
Stop interrupting people, why can't that go on the list? Don't interrupt people until we're done talking, and then you can make your snappy comments about whether it's true or not. Because you can do that at any point, at any time. But that's the point I want to make. Nobody else has to agree with it if they don't want to. I don't know, I'm done talking. I thought I made that.
Mr. Gonzalez? Facilitated retreat, limited time on agenda items after we have reached 30 or 60 minutes? Or a new idea?
Well, I like the retreat, I think that's a good idea.
Got you down.
As for the limited time, you know, that's a hard one for me. I think everybody should have the right to speak. But I think an hour is probably fair, once we've gone that far. We can either stop it or call the question, or...
Well, I believe that was Mr. Prather's intent, was not right away, but if we've been talking about it for an hour, then we need to start looking at cutting it down.
I can go with that.
Kind of there, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Meeting in person, or councilmembers at the dais. I mean, there's six of us here.
When I come back to you, I will ask him, we'll put that on the list. So you didn't have any other new items to put on?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Scott?
That's the next question.
I haven't gotten to you yet, dear. Yeah. Well, as we go through and we add one, that I have to go back around to ask people about that, as things get added. So that is Mr. Scott's. So that's now on the list. Did you have anything else? Okay. I'm going to go to Mr. Gleason, and do you have something else? Mr. Gleason?
Well, I've already stated that I'm a no on any kind of timeframes.
Okay, you're a no on the timeframe, got it?
Yeah, retreat, yeah, anything to bring us together. And then, do you have a third one?
In-person, just requesting everyone to be here.
I think I've been pretty clear that we should all be here, so...
So you're a yes, that would be a desire? Oops, I'm leaning on my keyboard here, weird things are happening. Okay, but you didn't have a new one, you were just expressing opinion on these others. Okay, Ms. Garza, back to you. Actually, the only new one on the list is being here in person, just a desire that it would be nice if we were all here together.
I didn't vote on time.
I'm sorry, you're right, you didn't. I'd have caught that eventually.
Right, with time, I mean, I guess an hour, but like, the thing is, like, when we talk about being inclusive, like, what it, like, there's, I could prepare all day, or new, like, thinking, like, you know, long down the road, a new councilperson can prepare all day. And the fact that y'all have years of experience ahead of me, like, obviously, we're going to be processing things differently. I might have more questions. I also, I don't know if y'all can tell, but I do better presenting my ideas when I type them out. And then, so sometimes I have to kind of, you know, put them in chunks, because that's a coping mechanism for my ADHD. So just in terms of like equity, I think for some of us, like, if it's like your area of expertise or your passion, you know, if we're talking about cat lady things, it will be quick and easy. You know, I'm a cat lady, animal advocacy. But if it's other things I'm not familiar with, it's like, it might take me a little while, longer, to kind of put together my thoughts, I don't know, I don't know. I think it would be valuable to see like different ideas in terms of like different structures, because I heard an hour time limit, and then I heard 30-minute time limit or something, or I just, yeah. So right now, I'm a question mark. I don't know, I would have to think about that more.
Well, and one of the things that we could do, I mean, when we're talking about budget, you know, we may go two, or when we get to ARPA funding, we may go, I mean, that may be deserving of an hour and a half or two hours. And we can certainly, after that hour, say, yeah, we're not going to go with the regular rule. If we, you know, majority of us say, yeah, we need to keep going because we're on a roll, we're getting some stuff done, and we do need more full discussion as we're each bringing our thoughts to the table, et cetera. So any of these can be flexible, it can be changed by us.
Right, I think if there's space for that genuine, like, consideration, right? So for example, or just having grace with each other, like, if there's something that, I don't know, for whatever reason, I couldn't fully prepare, I don't feel prepared to talk right away, or sometimes I ramble, things like that. If it's something that I'm particularly passionate about, even though like, let's say the rule is like, in total, all of us have like an hour to talk about something. If one of us like asks, like, okay, I know we're at, you know, 59 minutes, but can you guys, can we extend this? Like, will there be flexibility for that? Because I think, I feel like if there's like a rationale, or they might, I don't know. Y'all, I don't know, I don't know, I'm tired. Because I might not always like agree, or we might have fundamental differences in opinions, but I always think that it's important to have that space to have folks contribute, even if I know what they're about to say is probably not something that I'm going to be super excited about. I would still lend that courtesy of extending the time. If there's like a rationale, right? I don't know.
Makes sense.
I don't know.
Yeah, some conversations would go for an hour. Okay, your thoughts on everyone being here in person would be a good idea?
Well, regardless of my thoughts, I don't think it's, can we legally make everybody be here?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That's why I'm putting it this way, not to require it, but to just say, we think it's a good idea. That's why I expressed it that way.
I don't feel that way. I think it's also because I've done a lot of, through the university Center for Diverse and Gender Studies, we do a lot of teaching professors on how to infuse equitable practices in their courses and stuff, and just seeing how flexibility for folks to be doing stuff online. This is even beyond the context of COVID, to be honest with you. I think that, I mean, life goes on, sorry, Max, wish you were here, but I don't think there's like a fundamental difference between you being home and you being here, me personally. I can't smack you, but, I mean, I probably can't do that anyways, because we've got my buddy over here, he'll escort me out, so...
Okay, so I'll put you down as a no. I need to go back to, let's, Mr. Prather, am I putting you down as a yes for it'd be great if we were all here? Okay, I'll be a yes on that. Mr. Gonzalez, your thoughts on that one?
Well, I want to be a yes, but at the same time, there's going to be some occasions that you might have to stay home, and I'm okay with that.
Absolutely, whether someone's quarantining, or they're ill, or whatever. And, yeah, well, I had something on that, but I think I'll let it go.
The answer is yes, Mayor.
Yes. Let me just real quickly talk about the camera. And this is one of the things with Ms. Garza, and I think I have explained this to y'all, but maybe I didn't fully do it, is one of the things I have asked you to do is to leave your camera on, especially when people were at home. Is if you need to step away, leave your camera on and just step away. And the reason for that is so that our seven decision-makers stay at the top, because when you turn your camera off, when we had the city manager and other people on, you come in at the bottom, and we need the decision-makers on. So that's why I had said, please leave your camera on, but if you need to step away or close over it, that's fine. Just like we have to step away when we're here, just don't turn your camera off. So that was part of the harping about the camera thing. And if somebody needs to get up and stretch their back or whatever, I got no problem with that. And I don't think, I have never complained about folks and saying, don't do it.
That was just to, to like illustrate kind of like these antiquated perceptions of professionalism, right? While it's anybody's prerogative and right to think that stretching is unprofessional, I mean, when you really unpack that, it sounds kind of silly, right? And that's how I feel about a lot of these antiquated views of professionalism.
Well, especially when it has to do with your health, and you've got to get up and move around, that's something good. Mr. Baker, I need to go to you on the in-person, and I believe I have you down on the others.
So Mayor, I never got an answer from many of my colleagues, why the calling the question isn't for their timing concern.
Good point, that's something that we can do, and you're exactly right in everything you said about that. That's something that's out there. I think we need to make note that... It requires a two-thirds, so it would take, it takes five. It takes, with Robert's rules, generally speaking, to pass something as a majority, but to take away the right of a member to speak, or right of a member to do something, takes the two-thirds, and that's where we get the five.
Baker, you mind if I jump in? The main intent was just kind of put a clock in our minds when we're discussing something like, hey, Mayor, we're coming up on an hour on this, let's try to, our 30 minutes, you know, let's try to, you know, wrap this up, you know, get our last two cents in, and so we can make a vote and move on to the next agenda item.
And you'll recall I often do that. Oh, go ahead.
If we codify it in a rule, and then we have to make exceptions to that rule to make it work functionally, to leave space for good conversations or longer agenda items, then it seems like a bad rule when there's already something else in place that you could use to achieve the exact same thing.
Right.
And for the exact same purpose.
Right, yeah, we're either going to vote to suspend the rule to allow talking, or vote to, yeah. So not arguing with you on that one.
Can we change the two-thirds rule to like, hey, if a majority says, call the question, or is, no?
Not if you're doing Robert's rules. But here's the deal, I already do that, Jude, I mean, you're still new and don't know, but there are times when I have said, can we please just have, you know, one or two more? Or I'll see, you know, no hands raised, and I'll say, okay, we're ready, and then people will go raise your hand. So I'm already calling to your attention how long we have spent on an item often, or maybe somebody else does, and that's okay to remind me. And I'll say, can we kind of wrap this up, or can everybody be real concise in your comments? So I'm going to add to the list that we can use, call the question. And can I put you down as a yes for that, Mr. Baker? Uh-oh, we just lost him again. I think it's okay to say yes. I'm going to go around real quickly, that we can perhaps make more use of call the question, which is an option, Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Prather? Mr. Scott? Mr. Scott? I know, that we're going to start using it.
It's a tool on the toolbox.
Use the tool. Mr. Gleason? Okay, so that is something, however... This is call the question, you do have to be recognized by the chair, you just can't be muttering it next to me. You've got to be recognized by the chair, it takes a second, and then we vote, and it takes five to pass. Mr. Baker, we lost you again.
Yeah, I know, I went to hit my view button, and it swiped up and changed my screen on my phone. But yes, I am again. And then...
Well, we're all good on call the question.
Right, yeah, I could hear you the whole time. And then for, going back to the dais, you know, the only comment I would say is that the intent is to have it available for when it's necessary, it should just always be prepared for every meeting still.
It will be, because everything you said about somebody may need to be home for whatever reason, you're right. That will always be true. And the tone of law allows us to do it within certain rules, one of them, you know, you've got to stay on camera. So I don't see that ever going away, and besides, we're keeping it for staff. So if we have it for staff, it's going to be there for councilmembers to use, as needed.
So what I would ask is that from that decision, that we actually form like a real policy around it, not just have it be this floating thing that we allow. Because I've mentioned, there really needs to be, just in terms of where we are now in this digital age and our meetings, you know, any one of us could, from a device like this, have issues with executive session, for instance, right? I could theoretically be streaming my screen through a third-party app and have everybody see and hear everything that I'm doing. So I think that it's important for us to look at the paradigm shift that we're in in terms of technology, and some of the things that we really need to consider moving forward as we establish these kind of norms and parameters around this new technology.
So you do bring up an excellent point, and maybe we should have some written, I hate to call it a rule, but written understanding about how we're going to do executive session and agreement. So that, I'm going to put that on the list. And can I just see everyone that feels that we might want to have some... That we'll discuss having rules about executive session and the fact that you don't stream it to the world, and because it's executive session, and et cetera.
Could we have like maybe two councilmembers, like, put together, you know, a brief policy with Max? Or Baker, if you'd be interested, I'd be interested in doing something about that that we could address. Having councilmembers at the dais, but opt-ins for if we can't find, I almost didn't have a babysitter. My mother-in-law had to come all the way from Corpus Christi to be here today, and you know, or I would have zoomed from my house, you know, like, what are the, you know, what do we have in policy? Or if we have another COVID outbreak, you know, but, you know, the goal is, we're here.
Yeah, I'm talking about executive session in particular.
Executive sessions concerning...
Because for the meetings, I think that we're all just, you know, I think it'd be great if we were here, absolutely. There are going to be times when somebody can't, and babysitter issues is certainly a valid reason. I would rather you zoom in than miss the meeting.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, that's, there's going to be times, unfortunately, the law allows for that. So...
Baker, would you be interested in us putting together just a real simple, hey, we're meeting from, you know, a policy? A short policy about...
Yeah, 100%.
Okay, the two of y'all will work on, but that's for Zoom. I'm talking about executive session. Do y'all want to work on that one, too? All right, good. Counsel, are y'all good with the two of them working on that? Hey, we're going to review it after they bring it back, so, okay, we're all good with that? We're all good with that? Mr. Baker, okay. You have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, what you want?
Well, last thing I'm going to say on the call the question that comes to mind is, when you do that, you're just shutting everything off, as opposed to if we use a time limit of an hour, and we ran a two-minute warning, you at least get to each say something to wrap up your thoughts, as opposed to just voting the person out. And you're not, that way, you're not excluding anybody. That was just my thought.
Well, then that's a good point. Okay, so we're going to let two of our folks work on some suggestions for some guidelines. And I would say work with the attorney on the executive session part, because we've actually had a discussion before you rejoined us, and I think perhaps some of that could be in the deal. Okay, are we, have we closed this out as well as we can this evening? We have left, we're going to take a break. And what we have left is we have item 31. We need to have executive session on two topics, and then we will come back, and we still need to conclude and vote on item 24. still need to conclude and vote on item 24. So if y'all will please come back at the time that I request and not seven minutes later, it's 10:13 by the digital clock in here, please be back at 10:28, ready to start the meeting again at 10:30. And, and that's 17 minutes on whatever clock you have, Mr. Baker. We have come back from our break. It is now 10:28, and we are on item 31.
Yes, ma'am. Hold discussion regarding the process for appointee evaluations and provide direction to the city manager.
Okay. I believe that I will ask Ms. Spacek. And, and our presenter.
Hello again.
Okay, Ms. Spacek, would you like to introduce this one?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Linda Spacek, Director of Human Resources. This evening, we have with Sue Breland, who has served as a facilitator for this process in the past, and she has a presentation to introduce you to the proposal for this year's appointee evaluations. Hello, thank you.
Ms. Breland, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I appreciate it. In the interest of time as well as certainly transparency to the citizens, gonna run through this presentation pretty quickly. I think you all have seen it before, so that we can get to the maybe process improvements that you might want to consider for this year. So in this first graphic, really, we're just demonstrating that City of San Marcos uses a very standard performance management system, well, well-established. And just to say that we evaluate appointees on two components. One is competencies, which is skills, knowledge, and behavior, as well as specific identified goals. And in a performance management system, we wanted to set those things based on a objective standard. Then we set expectations that are relevant to the individual appointee. There is a measurement component, some way of, of measuring progress, in order to determine if there are any gaps or what success has been made in the past year. And then a very important component, of course, is the conversations. It's got to be a, a conversation between the appointee and the council, because feedback is a one, is a two-way street. And at the end of that, you revise in terms of any improvements that are to be made, development, as well as what new goals may need to be drafted, or just the same goal with a new level of progress. So that's what exists, and you have that. So the competencies that you have, you can see them listed here, there are eight, those are good competencies. And then the annual goal section, which are drafted by the appointees, which need to be, as I mentioned, based on some objective standard. Here, it says, could be the strategic plan, that is certainly applicable to the city manager. It may be something different for the other appointees. It might be best practices in social justice or municipal law, but that will be identified. But there is going to be some sort of objective standard for that employee's performance to be measured against. We do measure both competencies and goals. I'd like to suggest that we offer an opportunity for the appointees to do self-assessment, which is identical to the assessment that the council does on each appointee. But it's important that their voice be heard, and that's another data point for the council to use. Then those results are shared. The council goes and considers the feedback, development, goals that they will want to see for the next year, and as well as giving feedback on performance this year. And the appointees go off to draft their 22, 23 goals, because through these evaluations and conversations, they probably have some idea of both where the council would like them to go, as well as they, in their positions, know what they need to do in order to move the city forward. And then we'll have performance conversations, talk about competencies, what went well, what requires improvement, how are they gonna get that improvement, and what progress was made on previous goals, and what are next year's goals going to be. And then you finalize that development. I'd like to go ahead, Hayden, if you would, switch to the second presentation. I was very happy to be able to participate in the performance appraisal process last year, and one of the things that came out afterwards that the council talked about was they were really hoping to get a better focus on the goals and to help the appointees write goals that might be more effective. So I'm presenting some information on, on results-driven goals, which is managing by results. So I would recommend this going forward. And managing by results means it's aligned to, here it says the strategic plan, it could be aligned to, to, again, best practices, but there is some objective standard, and it focuses on the outcome rather than on the inputs. It's more about what a person does, not about how they do it or the time that they put in. The important part is that the goals are crystal clear with a shared understanding by appointee, evaluator, even the citizens itself, that they all know what the goal is. It really is a focus of effectiveness, and the most important thing is that it helps make evaluation more objective and reduces subjectivity. Now, we know we can't take subjectivity out completely because humans can't do that, but we do want to move it into an area that is more objective. Everybody wants to treat, be treated fairly, and I think that is a, a good way to start. It, it includes planning and focusing on resources. An important part is that it can be measured more precisely throughout the year, and that's something we don't think about in performance management. We think that as being a once-a-year sort of activity. But if we are looking at those goals throughout the year, we're able to say, we're on target, something has happened, we're not reaching the target we thought, so that adjustments could be made. So we're not waiting until a year when things might have gone awry to be able to make those changes. So that's important. And our stakeholders want to know how, how we're doing toward those goals as well. So here's just a, a quick look, and you can read the slide about a result-driven goal has to say what success will look like, and that is a different way than some of us have thought about performance. It's an outcome, it's not a how, it's gonna be done. We want to make sure that is measurable, and that will take some upfront work in terms of, do we already have a measurement system? Do we need to create a measurement system so that we'll be able to, to measure what we say we're going to measure? Go ahead and change that, Hayden. I have some examples, and this says, what is the strategy? That could be, what is the priority? What is the goal, the standard? It could be any of those things this sentence might, might represent. But then you start asking yourselves questions. What does that mean? How is it measured? What is it, when is it complete? So there's an example at the bottom of what would the result be? It would be completing something, perhaps a, a numerical value, a dollar value, a time indicator. But the point is, is that when both the evaluator and the appointee look at that result at the end of that year, they can both say, is it done or is it not? Or how close did I come? And if I didn't, why didn't I? What are the answers there? So with those things in mind, there's really three things that I think you need to consider as we move forward, because this process does need to begin very shortly. And so it's just three things. One would be to allow the appointees to provide a self-assessment as an additional data point for you to consider. Two is to ask or direct the appointees to work toward more result-driven goals and to provide them with the assistance that's needed to do that, because that's not something that everybody knows how to do. It is a skill, and they will need some assistance in doing so. And three would be to decide whether it might be beneficial to conduct the evaluation conversation and the goal agreement conversation in a single meeting with each appointee. Last year, and I think maybe in previous years, that has been done in two separate meetings that I think were a week apart. I think, having been in those meetings last year and seen how long they take and the kind of conversations, I think that those could be accomplished in, in one meeting. That would just take some work on administrative part to put all the pieces together so that you're able to do that at one time. But I think that might be a more efficient use of yours and the appointees' time. That might be different for the city manager than the other four appointees, because of the breadth of, of information that would be required for the city manager. But certainly for the other three appointees, I think a, a single meeting could accomplish the, the work that needs to be done. Do you have any questions? That, that's all that I have for you.
Thank you.
Max, I think has his hand up. Oh, I'll have a-
Hold on, I, I had to get off, off mute here.
Oh, sorry.
Kind of talking to myself there for a moment. Mr. Baker, your hand is up.
Yes, so one of the things I, I think I mentioned before, but seems like a, a good time to bring it up again, is when we conduct these evaluations, these evaluations are open to the public, right? Like not, the, the evaluation is conducted via email, we, we fill out a rubric, and then that is all aggregated, and that aggregated document is a public document, correct?
I believe so. Linda?
Hi. I think we need to let Linda Spacek address that, our HR director.
Councilmember, those documents have been provided to the appointees. They have not been placed in their public files.
Right, but when we, my understanding was that when we get the aggregated form, that somebody could do a, a public information request on that form, is that correct?
If, if that, if a request came in, the appointee would provide the response to that, yes.
And so what I would like to do as a part of this appointee process is to make that aggregated form attached to the agenda item wherein we decide to give them a raise or not. And if I could explain, you know, we, we hear a lot about accountability, and we hear frustrations about things not getting done, and if we as a body are going to decide to vote to give somebody a raise, some of the highest-paid people in our community a raise, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to back up our position. And, you know, going through the appointee process last time, I, I'm very excited about these changes, because it's less of just like a resume fluff employee review and something more goal-oriented and targeted that, that I think will actually create accountability here. But by sharing that document with the public, that gives them the opportunity to come to us and say, hey, did you, you voted to give that person a raise, but I saw all these negative comments in their review, why did you do that? Because right now, all of that is stuck in executive session, and it is really difficult for me to explain to the public at large why my colleagues decided to give somebody a raise, which is an important question when they feel like they're being underserved. And so that's something that I would love to hear from my colleagues. Would you support adding that aggregated reviews document to that public agenda item so that we can share in that accountability of the tasks that these appointees of ours are, are given?
I mean, if I could weigh in for a moment, I, I know that you are, you know, have a background in HR and understand the, the, the dynamics in enhancing the performance with a staff member. I, I would suggest that if there is gonna be something that would be at the public level, that it would be a very high-level document, because you're, the work of a performance evaluation is yes, to do rewards and give constructive feedback to the employee, but it, it's also to support and encourage their growth in their role.
Sure, and, and I, I can respect that. It's just that the document is already accessible by the public. It's just behind a pay barrier and, and other governmental barriers to people accessing it freely. And so I think the fact that it already lives as a publicly accessible document, and we are, in my opinion, hiding that from the public, I think that that's wrong when they are the most highly-paid employees in our city. And I think it's different doing an employee evaluation for people that you're, that you're the manager of, right? Like, like in HR, you know, those, the people that you're managing down below, that's a different set of evaluation and review than what we're doing at this appointee level, right? Especially when the community is coming to us and saying, we, you know, referring to our former city manager having issues with him not being accessible and things of that nature, right? And then we turn around and give them a huge raise. I, I, I think that that's the kind of, anyway, I'll, I'll go ahead and stop it there. I think I made my point.
Mr. Baker, could I offer perhaps a compromise? Because I understand where you're coming from, that we're giving a raise with basically no explanation, that perhaps a summary could be provided that would explain why we feel that they're raise-worthy if we do a raise, but not list every, every detail. Would that be something that you might consider?
I would consider it as better than nothing, yes. But I, I would, I would ask you to explain why a publicly accessible document that is only not available to the public because of access to technology or understanding the process or financial means, why that is okay, as opposed to just making it public and accessible for everybody?
Yeah, I, I'm surprised that this is an open recordable document. I would think that things that are in the HR file wouldn't be. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, even though, like you say, it's, anyway, I'm, I'm just surprised that it's, it's open recordable. But I would think that a summary might actually be more explainable, that we could talk, because different council members, you know, those items on there might be given the same weight when it's maybe one council member that's got a problem with one thing that that person did. And I'm not sure that that's, that's fair.
Right.
Because we do come up with a reason as to why we would give a raise, it's because things have different weights in our minds. And so I think it's a good idea to give an explanation. I just have a problem with just taking that raw document with just random things that, that we have put on there.
Sure, you know, I'll, I'll say that my problem with a summary in that fashion, though, and why I'm asking specifically for that disaggregated data, right? Where it's just like, here, here it is without saying who gave which answers, right? Is that when I looked at that, it looked like some of y'all were, were putting fours and fives kind of up and down, right? Just like, oh, I'll give a justification, I'll, I'll speak, you know, like, I'll, that some of you may have phoned it in a little bit, is what the numbers look like, because it didn't look like any real evaluation of, of what we've talked about as a dais and issues that I know I've heard colleagues bring up. And so I, what I, what I'm hoping is that when, when a situation like that happens, because I'll tell you, I put a lot of low scores for our former city manager, and I didn't see a whole bunch of other low scores near that, near those evaluations. And so people can look at that and say, well, why are all these other people, my colleagues, giving him these high ratings? Why did Councilmember Baker have such an issue with them? And, and they can, they can suss that out and say, oh, well, either people are phoning it in and not taking this super serious, or they can go to you all directly and say, hey, you voted to give him a raise, so I'm kind of assuming there's some of these high numbers here. But they will tell you as their constituent that they didn't feel that he warranted those numbers, right? So like, that's what I'm trying to get at, is creating accountability between us as elected officials, who are the only people who can reprimand and hold these appointed officials accountable. And right now, the community has no idea how you actually rate them, or, or whether they can hold you accountable at your next election for the way that you decided to just hand out raises and things of that nature, right?
Yeah. Or another option, I'm not sure what you mean by just phoning it in, there's also the possibility that we just had a different opinion than you did.
Sure, yeah, that, that's why I said it, it's, could be perceived that way, right? I tried to use very soft language there.
Or maybe that's not just perception, it's reality.
Sure, it could, it could be any of those things, and I would welcome the community to ask those questions of you all when they have the opportunity to see that data, because they can right now, but our rules, we're just deciding to hide it. If we're not hiding it, then, then I don't know what you would call it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not been a conscious decision to hide them, it's just, it's never been out there, and no one- been out there and no one has asked that it, no one has asked that it be out there. You are.
That's what I did at the last one.
And, and I have said that I get where you're going and I think a, a written explanation would be okay. I'm just expressing my opinion that I think that the data could be, well, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it. But I can, but I will ask the others.
Sure, but it's untrue that nobody asked before, because I asked the last time we did these reviews to, to make that public. So, I, I'm, I'm just clarifying that I, that I did ask for, for these, this form, exact form, to be made public. And that's why I clarified this in the past, but we weren't talking about it in a public forum, so I couldn't ask you all on the record whether you were comfortable with that or not. It was just decided in executive session, um, that, that that wouldn't happen, as evidenced by the case that, that hasn't been the precedent, but I did ask.
I don't think we agreed to do it, so, okay. Um, I will ask that question, but, but let's let some other people speak now, would that be all right? Okay. Mr. Scott, you're next.
Yeah, I don't know if this even has pertains to it, but do we have an itemized list of each employee's job description in, in a place that the public could access it?
Yeah.
Okay, and then it shows basically what they get paid for that position? That's what I've been asked.
There, the, uh, I'll turn this over to Ms. Spacek. I don't know that we list each person's salary, but the positions have ranges and all the, that stuff. And yeah, the job descriptions are out there, um, because I went out and looked at some the other day, I believe, is that correct, Ms. Spacek, that all the job descriptions are available?
It's in our job posting area and we're actually doing some updating of our department pages to make the, make it easier to navigate to them, but all the job descriptions and the pay ranges are out there.
Right.
Why don't we do, why don't we do just pay range? I'm sorry, why don't we do just pay ranges as opposed to what actually comes out of the budget?
Well, that's the HR part of it, that's what this position is, that's the description, that's what this job pays.
Okay.
Okay, and so I don't know that, um, I, I, I don't know what the rules would be on, on listing what individuals are paid, so I'll let Ms. Spacek ask, answer that one.
I mean, I, that, that is a different issue, I think, if you want to get to what employees are paid is different than what the value of a job is and if a job, if somebody's looking for a, a job, for example, they want to see what's included in the job and what is the range of pay for the job, as to what, from what, what an individual person makes.
And I've heard from even, um, employees that basically they are not getting as paid as what the averages are, you know, um, for their position and, you know, compared to other areas.
We had that whole discussion about going to do a, a, the compensation study? Is that what we're talking about, Ms. Spacek?
No, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about just, like I said, I'm going back to like each job, that position and what that one actually gets paid here in San Marcos, so, you know, as a council member, I can look and say, okay, they're making $200,000 and the guy in Round Rock's making $200,000, so why are they complaining? I mean, I don't have any reference.
That's what the compensation study will tell us.
The compensation study?
Yeah.
It tells everybody's paying out to the public? That doesn't, I don't think so.
What, what?
I think we're talking about two different things. I'll, I'll, I'll talk about it later, but it's just one, one I'm going to talk about.
Okay, so we're talking about appointees right now?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I looked at my notes and I think we, we, sometimes I don't understand my own notes. Uh, we did talk about the making things available to the public and I want to say we said yes. I don't know like how much of it, but I wrote down that we had, um, talked about it and people seemed like receptive to it. And then to Mr. Baker's point, I mean, if somebody foias it, they're going to get it, so, um, yeah, um, I, I don't know, uh, or regardless of what we decide, I think it's important that we, um, explain somewhere, like on the website or something, like, uh, these folks are, this is like, or, let me back it up, um, this is like our, um, city manager form of government, these are the only folks that council is like allowed to like directly interact with, I guess, or like, you know, directly over, overlook. And then, um, they're, you know, they set goals, like just explaining the whole process to people, I think, is, like, we don't even do that, so, um, like, let, let's, uh, step in the right direction, like, I feel like we could all agree on starting off with that and then, um, maybe further unpack to what extent we want to show folks like the results or whatever, I don't know. I mean, that, that's what I got on that.
I'm, I'm going to go around the table on it as soon as everyone has, okay, so, um, Ms. Breland, I need to ask you one question. I think you said something earlier about the, the professional performance factors allowing our four, and, and let me explain to the appointees, I'm sorry, to the public, we're only talking about four people. There are only four people that report to the city council, the municipal court judge, city clerk, the city attorney, city manager. Those are the only four people that, that we're talking about in, in all of this process. Um, so, Ms. Breland, I think that you said something about we should allow them to do a self-rating on the performance, professional performance factors, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, yes. It's, it's rather standard practice for whatever, you know, 360 survey, if you will, uh, this is the beginning of a 360 survey, that, uh, the, the appointee would be able to assess themselves, says, this is how I think I'm doing.
Right.
Um, and then you can compare it to what you think about that appointment, so yeah, that would be new.
In addition to their responses on how they have met their goals, I, that, so that's a yes, that's all I was looking for, I need to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, council, I'm going to ask you three questions. Uh, one is, uh, do we want to do what we were just talking about, allow them to do a self-assessment on the professional performance factors, which are management skills, job knowledge, uh, relationship, leadership skills, budgeting skills, et cetera. Um, secondly, um, the second thing I'm going to ask you is if you want to, uh, post in an agenda, the actual, I'm going to call it the, the, the raw but accumulated data and our individual comments that we make on, um, the appointees. If, if there's, if there's going to be a raise, that has to be on an agenda, so that this would back it up, or that we provide a summary that explains why we felt that person was raise worthy. And just something to think about is we do the kind of across the board raises for all other employees, and sometimes this raise is kind of in line with that, so, um, it's not like, um, I can think of times when, when maybe there, there wasn't anything special, it was pretty much just a standard raise that other employees were getting. But anyway, so it's going to be allow the self-assessment, do you want the whole raw data, or do we want to do a summary? So, I will start with, oh my gosh, this is an old form, uh, I'm going to start, Mr. Scott. Allow them to do the self-assessment?
Yeah.
Okay, and the raw data or a summary, or both?
Both.
Oops, put that in the wrong column. Okay, uh, Mr. Prather.
Um, allow the self-assessment.
Mm-hmm.
You're loaded.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for getting that.
Allow the self-assessment and a, um, summary for the raise.
Summary but not the raw data?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Garza.
Um, uh, yes on the self-assessment and then yes on the, um, the, the raw data.
Um, what about a summary in addition?
Um, yeah, I think that'll give some qualitative context.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay, uh, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Baker? Thinking of where you are, but I don't want to make a presumption.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that'll be a yes for the self-assessment and both, uh, the summary and the raw data.
All righty, and, uh, Mr. Gleason?
Yes on self-assessment, um, summary, uh, summary but no on the raw data.
And I'm, of course, yes on the self-assessment, no on the raw data, and, uh, yes on the summary, but it looks like we have four people that think providing the raw data is a good idea. I disagree with you, but it looks like that's where we are, we may re, we may look at that again. But that's where we are for right now. Um, are there any other comments, questions from, uh, council members on this, questions for Ms. Breland, Ms. Spacek, anyone? If not, we will close that out. Ms. Breland, thank you for staying up late with us.
Could I just, uh, put in your ear the, the other two questions that I'd asked, which do affect the, uh, calendar, uh, which was, do you want the appointees to focus on result-driven goals, because that's going to take more time to work with them? And do you want to do both conversations, both the revaluation and the goals conversation at the same meetings with the, with the appointees? At least the three, not necessarily the city manager.
To combine the evaluation discussion and their future goal discussion at the same meeting?
Yes.
For not the city manager, but the other three?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought you were saying that and I was sitting here shaking my head going, no, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm going to say no on that one. Uh, okay, council, let me go around again, uh, this time I'm going to start with Mr. Baker, two things, um, let me get this written down, uh, focus on result-driven goals, I think that's what we were here for and I think we're, I think we're all nodding, but I'm, I'm going to do the formal, ask you yes, and, um, so you're, to you, Ms. Baker.
Uh, yes, and I'm down to give one meeting a shot, I think with the right setup, you could do it in, in a more efficient timeframe.
Ditto to Max, yes, yes. Mr. Baker.
Mr. Gleason?
Um, I think, I think two days probably is going to be needed for the city manager. I can do one on the rest.
That's what the proposition is?
Yeah, I'm going to be a yes on that.
And the result-driven goals?
I'm sorry, Mary, I can hear you.
Result-driven goals?
Yeah, yeah, result.
The, the whole thing that we, the whole thing. Mr. Scott?
Yes and yes.
Um, I am a yes and a no, um, I think I'm into my eighth year of doing this and the whole idea was after the evaluation, after we went through all of this, I think that due to that conversation, that we need to give the employee time to go back and work on their goals for the next year, and I think to cram that into one meeting is not going to be fair to the employee. Um, I'm a big no on that one. I'm a yes on the result given.
I'm a yes, yes as well, ma'am.
I really think that y'all are not being fair to the employees to give them the time to go back and, and work on that. I think that's a really bad idea. I need to get Mr. Prather.
Mayor, I, I, I agree with you on that, I mean, look, we, we got to give them a little bit of time, so I'll, I'll agree with you on that, mayor.
Mr. Prather, first question, result-driven goals?
Yes on the result-driven goals and no on the second one.
No on the second one, okay. Can I convince anybody else? We, I don't think it's fair to the employee to try to do this at once, especially since we're going to be doing some changing. Can we ask the employees this time? Yeah, I think I know where that one would be. Ms. Spacek, your hand is up.
And I'll mention, if I can mention one thing, mayor, too, I think it's, I think it's good just to break it up time-wise, too, I think that we're asking a lot to do in, in one day for staff and for us, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I would add, that's one area that I have gotten feedback from the appointees in the past, is that they didn't feel like doing it in two separate meetings was beneficial to them. I would encourage you to have some conversation with them, uh, but that was some feedback that was shared with me.
They said they want to do it in one meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's surprising to me, because what we've been told before is there wasn't enough time in between those two in order to prepare their goals.
Okay, well, if you guys are hearing something different, y'all are on the front end of those meetings, I think, um...
I mean, it would make sense to me that they would want the time, but I mean, if that's what they're feeling and Ms. Spacek would probably know and we may not be hearing it, so.
We, we were told the, the year before that we didn't give them enough time.
Yeah, I've only been part of it one time, so.
Because it was...
Drive their way. I would think so, one more time.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Garza, and yeah, we could just ask them.
The, the hand up was like, let's just, let's not make assumptions, let's just ask them, um, that was my, that was my hand up.
Well, and I wasn't making an assumption, I was going by what we had been told, because we didn't give a lot of time one year and that was what we got back from the lady that we had before, is we didn't give them enough time. So, we'll ask, we'll just ask. And are y'all good, if one person says one way and one person says another, we go with what they want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, then we will ask. But I was going based on feedback that I had heard before, that didn't have enough time, so, um, okay. So, Ms. Spacek, Ms. Breland, did I miss anything?
Great, thank you.
All right. Um, council, we will close out item 31 and, uh, there was no official vote on that, so now, what, no, we are going to, uh, go, we would be going into executive session. Um, I have asked in the past if we wanted to do question and answer with the press and public, um, the one person who was here said nope, wanted to wait until after executive session, so that's what we've been doing. I understand that the request to go ahead and do it now, since there's only one, y'all good with question and answer with press and public now, before we go into executive session? Okay, then we will change our agenda a little bit, we will go into, um, we'll do question and answer with the press and public, I believe we have one who has signed up, Ms. Capoletta? Let's have your, is she in here? Yeah.
Yes, I'll, I'll take my three minutes, thanks Jane. Hi, my name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, they call me LMC. I really want to applaud you guys on that discussion with the farming and the livestock. I think that's really forward-thinking when it comes to what's going on in the world right now and I really appreciate that discussion. My first question is, um, Mr. Gleason or Mr. Prather, have you guys ever posted to the message board?
Not yet.
I don't think I've ever posted anything on there, I read it all the time, but I don't, I don't think I've ever really posted anything on there.
Okay, thank you, what about you, Mr. Prather?
No, I haven't, but I find it very useful.
Yeah.
Okay, well, because you were talking about dialogue and I, I just find it interesting that was your line of argumentation, but you haven't given any input, thank you for answering my question. My next question is, it almost seems like the Good Old Boy Network when it comes to evaluations, because I have filed open records on Burt, who bullied me. And I think there's a lot of people in this community who would like to know the raw data, and so I'm just wondering why Mr. Gleason, because Mr. Gleason campaigned on dealing with Burt, that's why I worked so hard for his campaign and let him, um, quite frankly, copy a lot of my survey question answers, and I'm shocked, Jane, you paid Max, but anyway, um, Mr. Gleason, why are you against giving the raw data?
Uh, it's, it's mainly that I, I do worry a little bit about if, um, if, if it might influence council members' opinions on things and how they put it out there, if it's actually going to go out to the public. Look, if, you know, one of the things about answering, um, doing a, I would be very careful about doing a, um, a report on someone, or if my, if my, if my employees at work were doing an evaluation, um, I wouldn't want my other employees to see those evaluations, right? And I want that to be very truthful, so I would, I would just be worried about, um, a council member in the future may not want to be honest about it because it's going to go public, right? That, they might influence their, what they put in there, um, if it's actually going to go out to the public.
That's a scary thought, that you wouldn't want people to know exactly what...
No, 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 I would want it to be truthful, not to be, what I want is, would it impact someone's thought process when they're doing an evaluation if they knew it was going to be public? And I think that's a possibility.
So you, so the bottom line is, Mr. Gleason, you don't want your raw information?
No, 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 I said I think it could cause problems of someone doing an evaluation and it impacting their, their, um, their honesty with it if, if it was going to go out to the public.
You have access, I do have access to Burt's evaluations, and so by process of elimination, I can ascertain who wrote what about Burt.
Yeah, but it's different if you request it.
We don't have access to it, we just don't know who said it, are you aware of that, sir?
No, it's different if you foia it than it is if it's just put on the agenda also, um, you know, I mean, and if you want to do it and you want to put it out in the public, that's fine, but I don't know if it necessarily needs to be in the packet, and I think a summary would be fine.
Okay, great, so I just don't understand if people can foia it, and obviously if you guys aren't going to put it out for the public, I will, so I just don't see what the difference is, I have access to it either way, and I've looked at Subos Avilas, I've looked at Kelly Eves, I've looked at Burks, I've looked at Steve Parkers, and so I don't know why you would not want the public to know how you're evaluating. would not want the public to know how you're evaluating someone making well over 200, 300,000 dollars a year. I'm just not sure I understand that. I guess my last question is, I've, I've, I, I would encourage the mayor specifically to go back and watch the meetings, and I think a lot of the time stuck in these meetings is feeling the need to correct every colleague, even just like this last agenda item. Here, my question's coming up. The last agenda item, even though you didn't get your way on that vote, you still felt the need to debate your colleagues. I'm wondering if the mayor would, would be willing to go back and study old agendas and old styles? Because I know, like, John Tamatis would oftentimes get the last word, but he would let everybody speak. Have you ever considered not feeling the need to give a response to everything you're, because it's literally just happened in the last agenda item? Have you ever considered just letting people say their piece, keeping quiet, and moving on to the next agenda item?
I do that most of the time.
That's not, that's a falsehood, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
We are through with question and answer with the press and public, and now, Ms. Cook, we are at item 32.
All right. Executive session in accordance with the following sections, 551.074, personnel matters to discuss goals for city council appointees, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and presiding judge of the San Marcos Municipal Court; B, section 551.086, public power utility competitive matters to discuss plans or proposals for electric, electric generation system improvements, additions or sales; and C, section 551.072, real property acquisition of land on the city's east side for a public park used in Hayes County parks and open space advisory committee, POS Act bond funds.
Need a motion to go into executive session?
De moved. Beg it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, I heard mumbling over here. Was that Mr. Scott? Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Ms. Cook, let's vote.
All right. Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes seven to zero at 11:12.
Um, I'm, got this clock up here, and, and just in case anybody's keeping a checklist, we will be voting on item 24 when we come out of executive session. So, council, time to close out this meeting, go into the other... We have returned from our executive session that we completed at a time that I wrote down on the form that I gave to Ms. Cook, 11:47, I believe.
Yes.
And so now, what we have remaining is we have item 24. I will make a motion to remove that from the table. May I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Scott. Tammy, I'm sorry, Ms. Cook, we need to vote on removing this from the table.
All right. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, would you read item 24 so we can vote on it?
Yes, ma'am. Consider approval of resolution 2022-65R approving and authorizing the city manager or her designate, designate to execute an assignment of rights with the lower Colorado River Authority, LCPRA, related to the city's capacity participation in the Gentex LLC Electric Generating Station, declaring the agreement to be a public power competitive matter of the San Marcos Electric Utilities SMU under section 552.133 of the Texas Government Code and declaring an effective date.
I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a motion from Mr. Gleason, second by Mr. Prather for approval. Questions, comments, concerns?
Why question, Mayor? Sorry, I was going to...
Go ahead.
Did they ever answer the question Mr. Scott asked about how much money we're making a year?
That's not something that we're going to discuss now, that was executive session content.
Okay, well, just, I'm tired.
We all are.
I know, we forgot to bring you that.
Otherwise, we would, would do that. Okay.
Mayor, I just got a comment, I just want to thank Tyler for staying up late with us and, and providing wise counsel for us on this.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, like I said, I think that there's devils in the details, and I think it wouldn't be a good deal for the community, and it wouldn't be a good deal for the citizens' pocketbooks in the long run. And I think that it's, it's, it's a very short-lived, it's very short-lived.
Mr. Scott?
Hmm?
We discussed that at the executive session, if you want to vote no, you can certainly vote no.
What did I say?
Well, I don't know where you're getting ready to go.
No, I'm not, I did, I just said, voting for this is going to cost, it could cost the people more money in the long run. That's all I'm saying.
And, and, okay. That's your opinion, and you may vote the way you wish. Ms. Cook, let's vote.
Mr. Scott?
I'm sorry?
I'm starting with you.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Ayes.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.